All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees Retreat. Today is October 1st, 2021. We thank each and every one of you for taking time out of your day to come out. And want to thank also all of those that have been involved in the preparations of the material. So, thank you, Chancellor, and to the rest of the staff. We'll call, now go ahead and call this meeting to order. We do have some public comments. The first person we have is Joe Bennett. Good morning, Mr. Bennett.
Good morning.
Turn it on, yes. Mr. Bennett, you have-
Technically challenged.
You have three minutes, and Mr. Gates will let you know when your time is up.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Trustees, my name is Joe Bennett. I live in White Settlement. I want to speak to you today about the TAD election that's approaching. All I want to do is read a letter by Mayor Newton that he sent out to the mayors. I'm not sure if he sent them out to the college or the school districts. This is signed by Mayor Richard Newton of Collville, Texas. It is once again time to elect the appraisal district board directors. Votes are to be submitted by each taxing unit by December 15th, and I am writing in support of nominating and re-electing board members Gary Lasada, who couldn't make it today, and Mr. Richard Diott, who is here today. Both are exceptional individuals who have served us well as TAD board members. During their tenure, the TAD board, Gary and Rich, were instrumental in bringing about change in the board culture. They added public broadcast to meetings, required the board packages to be online for the public, amended spending policies to where expenditures of $50,000 or greater goes to the board now, funded a general council for the board. I don't know if you're aware, but the TAD board never had a general council, never had an independent council to protect the entities. There was always an overlap between lawyers that the appraisal district used and those that directed the board. Before being elected to the TAD board in 2019, Gary served as a member of the Tarrant Appraisal Review Board. From 2009 to 2015, Gary is very versed in property tax code and valuing property and how TAD operates. With the undergraduate degree from the University of San Francisco and a master's degree from Stanford, Gary brings an analytical approach to the valuation process and encloses Gary's resume. That's what the letter says. I have provided the resume. I'll let Mr. Diott speak to his own credentials, but the next paragraph is about Mr. Diott. I'll drop to the very last paragraph. Since elected to the TAD board two years ago, Gary and Rich have shown themselves to be tireless advocates for accountability, transparency, and fairness. Please join me in supporting the reelection and assign your organizational votes to these exceptional candidates. Now, how this came about is that Jerry Duque, the city manager of Collville, has been listening in since the broadcasting of the meetings every time there's a meeting, and so has Mayor Newton and several other entities. And this letter is a manifestation of everything that they've heard and has put into this letter. I would like to thank you, and this is an exceptional opportunity for me to address y'all on such a retreat, so I feel really good about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Rich Diott.
Good morning, and thank you for your service. I am Rich Diott. For the last two years, I've served on the Tarrant County Appraisal District Board. The initial, let me give you a little background. I live in Southlake. I'm an engineer, civil engineer, and do some land development here and there, and I've lived in the community for about 25, almost 30 years now. In my work, I'm in front of boards, city councils, and school boards frequently. It's an environment I'm pretty comfortable in, and then, as I'm out doing my work, I run into people, just like everybody does. And my initial reason, and it continues to be my reason for wanting to serve on the board, is because of the fact that property owners don't feel like they're being treated fairly by TAD, and I personally believe there is a lot of evidence to support that because of some things actually have even happened to me while I'm on the board, but also others come to me. I live in Southlake, and nobody that's called me with a problem in Southlake is going to suffer much if they don't get relief for what they're wanting because it's a fairly affluent community, but I get around. And the people that concern me more are people on fixed and low incomes, and when their value goes up a lot, it hurts. And I've been at the counter at TAD long before I was on the board, and I've heard some of these stories, and it troubles me. Now, I believe in public service, it's important to push but not break, not blow things up, so my intention and my action is to be careful and respectful, but do push for transparency and maybe find ways to improve things. The last time I ran, I got votes from all over the county, school districts and city councils. I got some votes from the Commissioner's Court, Tarrant County Commissioner's Court, and I take every one of those votes of confidence to heart. My job is to serve, and really, you all and your constituents are also my constituents, and just try to bring some fairness. So, I do ask for some of your votes if you give them to me. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go back and just use those as a vote of confidence in an agenda that pushes to improve TAD so the citizens of this county don't feel like they're being unfairly treated. So, that's it. I know, I'd love to take questions, and I can't, but if you need my contact information, I know they took that down, and I would love to talk with any of you offline if the opportunity presents itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Diott. Mr. Gates, are there no others?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and go into the agenda, Chancellor. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but do you have it? Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you for taking the time today. Certainly, this is above and beyond the call, and I greatly appreciate it. We have quite an extensive and varied topical agenda. The intent is to walk through, talk through, very informally in some nature. I have some prepared remarks, but certainly for the board to engage is the reason why we're here, and I would like for you, at any particular time, whether I'm in mid-sentence or otherwise, to feel welcome, open to engage, and we'll also just set some time to in-between topics, if you will. So, this is intended to be fluid and somewhat informal in nature as it relates to working through the agenda. We appreciate the time and the opportunity, and so why don't we just begin? If we can begin.
Hope you memorized it.
Yeah, I got it all memorized. There we go.
Okay.
Were you advancing that, Bruce?
[inaudible]
So, last year, I shared this visual with the board as a reminder of how we got where we are with our colleges' planning, and we've had new trustees since then, so I thought it'd be a good idea to take a quick recap. In 2016, we initiated the planning effort that we're under today in order to plan for the long-term needs of the institution. To plan comprehensively, we really needed to know the future physical needs of the institution as well as the programmatic and service needs of the institution. So, our financial capacity and plans also had to be overlaid with these programs and services and physical plans to ensure that we were able to feasibly deliver on a model that we did develop. As you know, we've been working with for some time, and will continue with Air Saint Gross, a nationally-known firm that worked with hundreds of colleges across the country. They were on board when I arrived here, and so we began that work to make sure that the program and service plans, the physical plans, and the financial plans all came together in such a way that would meet those needs. So, this is the overall umbrella structure, if you will, that guided our ideas of moving forward for the future of the institution. So, this chronology, we took this approach knowing that in order to meet our future needs, we would need to go to the voters with a bond referendum and with a solid, comprehensive plan. So, a quick review of some of those conversations we had that got us here today. In July of 2017, we received the program and services planning content, also referred to as the college's goals and principles. So, that was established in 2017, and that was shared. And since then, we've continued to ask for renewal of the goals and principles in order to maintain the focus, and this is important for the continuous improvement of these areas, so we give a consistent message to the college that these are the things that we feel are important. In December of 17, we received the planning work that we conducted on the southeast campus, and in July of 2018, and this was a critical point, I think, we reviewed the program and services planning content and added on the physical planning and financial planning to show a preliminary picture of how all three aspects were coming together to inform our bond program planning. So, these things, these three aspects moving together as one overall arching effort, if you will, to produce the bond program. In October of 2018, we actually did a deeper dive into the program and services planning and had a conversation college-wide related to these integrated planning efforts. So, began socializing with the college this approach. In July of 2019, we presented the version of the comprehensive plan that included the programs and services, and again, the physical needs and the financial commitment, and we informed, which helped really inform our bond referendum. So, in July of 2019, that's when we established that plan moving forward, and luckily, in November of 19, the bond referendum was passed, and we were able to begin implementing the plans that we had developed, that again, that we started in 2017. With the financial capacity to implement the plan, we began to propose engagement with key partners like designers and construction managers at risk and owners' reps to deliver on what we promised to the voters. So, that is a really somewhat of a quick chronology of more distant future. More recent future was that in February of '20, we reviewed the physical planning for the northwest campus with you, and in December of '20, we conducted expanded physical planning recap with the board, and so just a year ago. In May of '21, a few months back, we reviewed the physical plan for the southeast campus, and today, I'd like to spend some time talking about the program and services plans and how they're integrated into the physical plan. So, specifically, now, what are some of the actual examples of how this planning has actually come together? So, we often talk about 3G and AP as a term or as items on the board agenda each month, and really, they've been presented in the form of really separate presentations. We also provide monthly information about the bond program, quarterly presentations, and have bond website as a regular source of information in the dashboard. But what is real critical now, and as I mentioned before in the first few slides, is that we've always had the intent of these things coming together in an integrated way. And now, we're in a place with the maturity of the work, the goal and the principal work, that is, where we have some good examples on how the programs and services, the goals and principal work, is really informing our physical space. And so, we have some slides to show, and you have, I should mention, oops, we've got to go back, right? Sorry. I think we have to move to another document. All right? Yeah, okay, here we go. So, you have all the slides in front of you, and what I want to do is just highlight a few things, and some of them may be duplicative in nature, but to show how the goal, principal work, the integrated planning is actually going to show up in these facilities. So, this is a look at the northwest campus in terms of its footprint, and there are a few things to note here. It's a very new front door, is the primary entrance, student gathering spaces, outdoor classroom, amphitheater, memorial, and sitting areas to optimize views. So, what we're trying to emphasize there is the campus character and quality, and the overall campus identity has been improved tremendously, and this is something this campus needed. This is one of those campuses that had no front door and maybe six front doors. And so, when we get all said and done, this was the desire to ensure that we addressed the campus character and quality.
Excuse me, Gene. North is just as it would be on the map, is it? And this?
Uh...
It's just on the top, is it normally? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. So, a couple other principles that are affected in the northwest that we've already determined. One is a new high school for Fort Worth ISD, the classrooms, and they were replanned to really ensure that the LE standards were adhered to. We have science labs with new prep space and student success spaces, all sized and improved to the standards that we had developed through the LE principle. So, as you see, that these principal things are actually being lived in the design of the facility. And so, as we go deeper into...
Building one?
Yeah, I had two of the same. I'm sorry. Yeah. That was building one, I'm sorry. So, okay. Now, we're okay. In building one, level two, you'll see again the LE, the science labs, again, as I messed, as well as the success center. I think I have one extra slide, and here's the problem. Okay.
That's the second floor.
Yeah, second floor, I'm sorry.
That's the, yeah, that's level three. This is two. That's level two.
This is level?
No, that's two.
That's two, okay.
That's two.
Yeah, it's like twice for each of these slides.
Pardon?
You'll have to click twice.
Twice for each? Okay, sorry. So, that's level two, which I had gone through, so let's go over to level three. Okay, so I have to click twice for each slide? Okay. Learn something new every day. All right. So, here we have evidence of the work environment related to faculty work environment space and how that is being designed around the neighborhood model, and as we speak, faculty are meeting offsite. I think it's right now up in Detroit with Steelcase to go over those different models of how the neighborhood, the options that would be in a neighborhood environment. We have LE student success spaces as well as science labs again. So, this really helps, if you will, to articulate to all, the entire campus community, how this work that they've been doing over the years is showing up in the construction. Here, we have a number of spaces, if you will, a lot around the student experience, a new front door to a welcome center with immediate access to the orientation space. So, now, when a student comes in, it is through that front door, and immediately, the space that they need to engage in is right there in terms of orientation, and the student success coaches being there, and all this is co-located for better onboarding services.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
So, the entrance to the north as well, or is it just the way the mapping is?
The entrance is...
It's the way it was, that's why I was trying to figure out. Do you see what I'm saying?
The entrance is right here.
In the corner.
In the corner, and this is north.
So, it's still north. Okay, all right. We're good.
Put your mic on.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to get clarity around where, if this was at scale, and it sounds like it is, it's north. Okay, thank you.
So, here we have on building two, level two, a real good example of the workspace environment and development of the neighborhood area to support faculty and staff, and this is important equally. We have a lot of unequal allocation and utilization of space, and so, a lot of time was spent to ensure that that was eradicated. Huddle spaces to support faculty and student interaction and conference needs, support for academic programs, and consistently through faculty interactions and collaboration. It really provides, now having lived at a couple months at our new offices down Trinity River, there's certainly a great deal more opportunity for natural interaction and collaboration, as well as private meeting space for faculty and student engagement. This is building two, level three. Again, the work environment space as well as the student experience space to support student-run organizations, and how that has been planned, if you will, to coincide tightly, closely with the faculty space, the student support. Often, the faculty are engaged in the student support organizations. Down below, you see some LE classrooms. They're standardized with immediate access to student success space and support programs. And so, again, adjacencies are very, very important in all of this, in how things relate to one another. It really helps in terms of the flow and service to the students. This is building three, level one, and this speaks to the music and visual arts space, as you can see, and again, that was standardized too through the LE principle. District-wide, and this is a real challenge, the music and visual arts space, because many of them look quite different. There's not a lot of similarity in a lot of that. Here we have building three, level two. Again, development of the neighborhood plan to support all faculty and staff equally, huddle space, and other support academic programs that are consistent with faculty interaction and collaboration with students. So, space with programming. And I know I didn't mean to run through these quickly, but I think you get the gist of how the work of the goals and principles are now being embedded into the physical space.
Gene?
Yes?
What, thank you for all this, but how is the, how's it going at Northwest right now with all the construction and the students coming in? Are things going pretty well, do you think?
Well, I'm not there every day. Often, when I don't hear things, things are going well.
Okay.
And I really haven't heard. I've made one trip up there this semester, and it is a challenge to get around, for sure, but we're making, it's progress.
Progress, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think it's worth noting and pointing out, I mean, that campus has been under some strain for four years now with the scaffolding and such, and for the work of the faculty and staff and students, the diligence they show, the persistence, I think speaks a lot, and Zarina takes great pride in ensuring that that is acknowledged and understood and recognized, and it's a reality, and really puts a really good face and engagement and involvement with folks to acknowledge that. And so, that's no small hurdle. So, I'm glad that you mentioned that because it is something that's been done well, I think.
When is the grand opening going to be? What's the, what is the plan for the openings of these new buildings, you know?
So, we have been waiting to do groundbreakings so the, you know, the weather would accommodate, you know, we don't want to be out there in 90-degree weather. Reg, have we scheduled any of that yet?
We're looking at mid-November.
Mid-November for a groundbreaking, and we'll do those things, the groundbreakings.
So, we need to do the groundbreaking, so it's going to take some time for all of this to happen, of course, so, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the groundbreakings, the topping-off ceremonies, and ribbon cuttings and all that. Yeah, we got, you're not going to see that on this, okay?
Oh, no.
We got a ways to go, yeah.
No, I just don't.
I know. But it's a good point because those celebrations are going to be very, very important, and so that we acknowledge that work that's gone. But yes, we will do that.
Okay.
I have a question as well. That's a great point, Mr. Greenhill. So, to that point, what are some of the things, or have we, have any programs or special services, campus support services, that we've implemented there as a result of, you know, trying to make sure that we're able to meet the students where they are and accommodate them? Are you aware of any that you could maybe articulate?
Not in a lot of detail, but I do know the wayfinding is a challenge there, and that is something that has been paid attention to for folks to get around.
Great, okay. Thank you.
All right, this is building three, level three. Okay, went through that. Okay. And now, we are at building four, level four, and you see reference to LE there specifically on the flexible space that we have for multi-use for performance, and that really, again, was informed through the work of the LE principle, and all the performing arts space, again, is generated from the LE principle. A white box, again, through the LE principle, and some space related to the integrated student success model, specifically looking at meeting space, training spaces, food pantries, and just general support, if you will, for students. And so, you can see those principles present in this floor plan here. Now, we'll move to building four, level two, and this really speaks to the learning commons space and principle, and you can see the layout of that related to the stacks and periodicals and things of that nature, the interaction spaces. So, there's a lot of effort in the learning commons principle as it relates to how do students engage learning outside the classroom in a method that is efficient and effective and serves their needs, with a lot of adjacency consideration here. So, they don't have to walk and all over the, so you have a writing lab in one building and a math lab in a different building, and two, you know, some tutors here and some tutors there. That's what we have in a lot of circumstances, simply because as the institution grew, you know, we just didn't have the opportunity to take a step back in time to look at those types of adjacencies, and that's probably going to be the overall student satisfaction benefit of this as it relates to how students will navigate each of our campuses. It'll be much more seamless, it'll make much more sense to them. So, we have supplemental instruction as well as, you know, writing labs, speech labs, math tutoring labs and such, and so, again, an effort spent there to ensure that these are provided in an efficient and effective manner for students. So, building four, level three, again, building four, a lot of the learning commons space at each of those. So, we have academic support specifically as it relates to computer stations and flex spaces, small meeting rooms for students, study space for them, as well as resource or access to digital resources for technical support, Makerspaces and things like that. Those types of spaces didn't exist, weren't even the nomenclature 10 years ago, a Makerspace. And so, I think we'll end up probably doing a lot more in the virtual reality and Makerspace environments in our learning commons, and so, what we want to do is to make sure the space accommodates those types of activities.
What is Makerspace?
So, it's really, how do you, you know, 3D printing, how do you create, you know, there are different tools, technological tools in which you can create today.
Inventor's lab.
Yeah, that's a, okay, inventor's lab, yeah, so, exactly. So, let me, I'll stop there before we go to the southeast campus, if anyone had any other comments or questions.
I did notice on the... I did notice on the plans that there were dedicated spaces to student services like food pantries. Are those... Are we planning intentionally to support services like that across the district? Or are we retrofitting or a combination of the two?
Yes, we do, and we do right now. And we are in partnership with the Food Bank in which to provide, you know, the food, if you will. And so, we're trying, we have pantries at campuses. This will be more a standardization. But we also have some of the, a couple rather larger opportunities that currently exist right now. For example, the Northwest Campus, they use the, I can't remember the building out there on Saturdays, at least one Saturday a month, where hundreds of pounds of food is available and folks lining up quite early in the morning for that. So, there's yes on every campus, yes in standardization of the food pantries. And we'll continue to evaluate that and really assess it for need, because as we've, you know, shared before, food insecurities is a primary barrier. We have to go somewhere else now for Southeast? So, this is an existing and proposed, if you will, site plan for Southeast. Let me get to the proposed comments here. A much clearer front door model with onboarding space and welcome center at the forefront of campus. So, again, just like as you saw at the Northwest Campus, the main front door will guide you into the welcoming center in an area where students will onboard. There is a lot of cosmetic that really helps the flow of students in that campus related to an integrated courtyard for events and overflow for, you know, onboarding and tours and such. If you've been on that campus, you know it's a couple big hallways, and those hallways are filled. This will really make it look much more like a college campus overall, with some dedicated outdoor space to support learning and socializing, paving some parking that's not paved right now to improve the access for parking. And again, an even larger program courtyard to facilitate student movement and most activity or to host activities and events. And again, I'm drawing reference to what it is now, is very stagnant and standard to a much more open environment with a lot more opportunity. Essential space and stair for outside lectures, learning and gathering as well, and really align the functions and activate the courtyard and campus gardens for culinary, tech, and science space outdoors. So, it really will open up the culinary space to have some outdoor dining, and it'll be much more attractive all the way around. Some covered area to support, again, outdoor activities during the warmer weather. Again, you go outside there and you're into the sun, and that's it. And so, really a much more welcoming environment to be there and to stay there as well. Provide some patio space, again, for culinary arts. And overall, for this particular campus, just to enhance the campus identity with entry points and clarity and a lot more quality than exists today. So, those are, excuse me, some of the big desires and the overall campus character and quality of the Southeast Campus. And I think, I hope you'll see, these are things that were much in need and to pay attention to, to give this campus a much different look, overall look, if you will. So, as we get into it, there are some, again, we'll go through a couple of the planning exercises that have happened related to the work there, as how the work will show up in terms of the principal work. So, again, ILE, standardizing the classrooms, access to success spaces and different resources. This is a campus that's been very difficult to schedule, because it was built for 5,000 students and it's now at 13,000 students. We will add significant square footage to meet the future demand, but it still will be a challenge, if you will, as it relates to classroom scheduling. Full campus...
Is that the current 13,000? Is the current...
This semester, no, it's less than that this semester.
Less than that, but it's generally 13,000.
It's been between 12 and 13,000 for a couple of years, yeah.
Good grief.
Built for 5,000. As Northwest was built for 5,000 and has, you know, around 9,000 or so.
Tell us, do you have any more details about the culinary arts, what we're doing there?
So, it will be expanded space, but there'll also be a lot of efficiency to it and more opportunity as it relates to the ability to do different, you know, culinary activities around, you know, baking, let's say, and also a restaurant which will be a service restaurant, indoor and outdoor. And so, it'll be a little bit more professional and a little bit, you know, one which will be a, you know, working program, that what they produce will actually be sold. And we talked about different things on how to also take some of those products elsewhere, but it'll bring better space, more efficient space, and more opportunity for students overall.
That's good.
So, the restaurant will be open to the community?
Yes.
Ben Barber in Mansfield has a restaurant that the students operate that's open to the community.
Yeah.
I was just saying, Ben Barber High School in Mansfield has a restaurant that is open to the community, that the students prepare the food, serve, and do all of that. So, that's a good exercise for them to learn all eight aspects of culinary.
Absolutely.
So, again, as you can see here, the ILE principle, the workspace environment principle for faculty and staff, neighborhood space. Then there will be, the portables that have been portables for 20 years will be removed, okay? And it will certainly enhance the quality of that campus overall. Level two of the academic wing, again, speaks to, and I know these are somewhat, you know, difficult to see, but really speaks to the classroom, the standardization of the classrooms again, and areas related to the student success model, Integrated Student Success Model with a variety of spaces for technology support and individual or student or group work, student work, that is. Again, a lot of work has been done related to the enhancing the entries of, different entries of this campus, and again, the huddle spaces and neighborhood spaces to help really support academic programs and consistency with faculty interactions and collaboration. So, particularly in this campus where we had folks in programs scattered a bit, there's really been much more of an efficient engagement of the adjacencies of the student space and the faculty space.
Remind me again what neighborhood space is. I kinda get the idea.
So, in the work environment space, when you talk about an open work environment.
Yeah.
So, the nomenclature is open work environment. Well, what does that mean? Let's define it, let's drill down a little bit more. So, the concept of neighborhood, because it's an open work environment, it's intended to be various types of spaces where people can live and do their work.
Okay.
So, like a neighborhood, you have two bedrooms homes, three-bedroom homes, four-bedroom. So, the concept is the same, that it's not gonna, you know, it's not all gonna be cookie-cutter and all look the same. Look around you here, up here, and we'll have time for tour. This is a very open environment, and as you walk, go around, you'll see a lot of different spaces and, you know, to folks to meet in twos, fours, eight, different types of furniture, different types of technology. So, the neighborhood concept is to provide a lot of opportunity of using your space.
So, you say there's some people in Detroit right now or Chicago looking into this to kind of...
Yeah, and we've engaged Steelcase, which is a leader in this, and from a consulting standpoint. We've engaged them for a few years. So, and I think they're there now, I'm not sure, but if they aren't, they're going. There's a group of about 20 people visiting Steelcase, because it really is about looking at, you know, the furniture and the fixtures and such, and how they might be utilized, and then in the design of the space.
Then after that, they will come back and consult with the champions and so forth to kind of put things together.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Right. So, it looks like, when you say neighborhood space, it looks like one big, you know, you see like one big yellow, okay? Well, that's all it is right now, but it's gonna, you know, chop up, if you will, just like a house, it's 3,200 square feet. Well, what is in that 3,200 square feet? And so, this will be the same concept.
So, is this, if there's existing offices, per se, for the faculty, this is additional space, or is this going to replace existing? Or is it both?
Probably will be both.
Okay.
And certainly, in Northwest and Southeast, it'll very much be more so replacing, because it'll be more new. As we get into northeast and south, more established, and so, we'll be, you know, replacing that.
Okay.
But that's gonna take a while. I mean, we're not gonna be doing that overnight.
Okay.
Okay. So, here is the level two of the... You see? Yeah. Let me see here. I wanna get ahead of it here. Okay. Yeah, so we did cover this. Okay. I'm getting confused here a little bit with the clicking. All right. So, the next is the Learning Commons level two. I guess we have classes for that. I probably, maybe I should take one here. So, in Learning Commons level two, it's formalized space for grant and community programs like, you know, Catholic Charities and TRIOs. So, we have a lot of different types of programs that you've heard before, and I just mentioned a couple, you know, TRIO and Title V and Catholic Charities and dual credit. A lot of those programs came on iteratively at different times, and frankly, they were placed wherever the opportunity was in the campus. This gives us an opportunity to bring like-type of initiatives together. And again, the workspace environment to create, very flexible in work areas, again, with a neighborhood model in mind. Huddle spaces, and that's again, a concept where an opportunity for smaller groups, two, three, four, to get together. And then, the Learning Commons, all the Learning Commons will have a concierge point of managing student visits. So, again, this would be something that was standardized. So, when a student comes in, how are they triaged through the Learning Commons to ensure that they end up where they need to be, okay? Much like when you go, you know, to a hotel or something and the concierge, you're looking for services. And so, that is a concept that will be embedded throughout the district. Now, we have the opportunity to, you know, to match those physical spaces to actually being able to do that without sending people around a campus. Things like supplemental instruction and digital resources will be grouped adjacency, because they do relate to one another, and again, much more efficient for student use. And then also, the high school dual-credit offices, again, in relationship to things like Catholic Charities and TRIO. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Good. So, here's the Learning Commons level one. I've shared that. And let's see here. Yeah. So, this is the Student Experience Building, and this is the new building that'll be right up front, and as you currently come up through the drive there, this will be an additional new building right up front, and really to provide a primary function for, you know, the onboarding process, for advising and different forms of onboarding support in terms of, and also as a welcoming center. So, much like the Northwest Campus, it'll be very clear that, you know, you don't have to go very far once you get through that front door to get served.
In this regard, you've probably mentioned this before, but on the other campuses, are we trying to do the same thing? You've talked about this many times before. Just remind me, the front door, welcoming, so forth and so on, are we doing that in...
Yes, yes, we are, and it is a challenge, but it begins at the parking lot. So, when we talk about campus character and quality, wayfinding, okay? That begins at the parking lot, one. But then, second, what we have the opportunity to do in Northwest and Southeast is really intentionally design...
Design it.
Parking lot right into...
Yeah.
The space that serves you first. We're not all that fortunate in the other campuses right now to do that. But that's why the wayfinding and the campus character and quality have become important, because at least that guides people to where it'd be. Northwest and Southeast, it really, you know, presents a front, the front door, you can get served right when you come through the front door. We wanted...
Gene, excuse me. You've mentioned wayfinding a couple of times, and as a very casual visitor to these various campuses, I find it extremely confusing. Are we working toward a naming convention of some kind? Where does that process stand?
Yes, the answer is yes. Reg, you wanna give a little detail on that? Yes. But your point's well taken.
A little difficult, are you kidding me?
Reg can give an update as to where we are right now related to that effort and where we intend to go.
Yes, quite timely. We've been working for the last couple of months with the various departments. There are layers to the nomenclature, as you know, and we've gone down to the veritaxis of even wall plugs, how they have their own coding. The students have said that it's confusing, they don't understand the nomenclature on the building, so we're going to a different system with the company that we've been working with, and the wayfinding and nomenclature, we found, kind of go together. So, we're gonna change all the acronyms, is a proposal that you see on the buildings, and go to something simple like Northwest, N-W-O-one, Northwest Building One, and then do the proximity to the parking, so that you know which building you're going to and which lot you wanna prefer, and then your second tier. But we're going just to a simplistic kind of nomenclature, so that even when you're navigating from home, through Google, through our website, so all of it kind of links together and you can plan your entire trip. But we've dealt with all the departments, because we wanted to make sure that software would talk to each other and know what we would have to change. You know, we got code blue phones, we have fire kind of equipment within the buildings, we have to notify police, fire, all those codes are used by those different departments. So, it's been eye-opening, to say the least. I had no idea, it was so many layers to it, and we just assumed about wayfinding as a way to get somewhere.
What does, I'll notice coming in here, what does OW, what is it? OLW?
OWTL. Yeah, that...
What does that mean?
So, it means very little to me, but it's what the fire would use, and our maintenance folk, they know what it means. It's O-West, you know, we got a few buildings, and then it's called Seattle.
I see what you're talking about.
You know, Center for, you know, Aviation.
Okay, so you have to have, okay. Okay, alright, so you have to have, okay.
And we're trying to make them a bit more sensible, you know, to, to the layperson. Let me say it that way. Fire, police, they know what it means. But to the layperson, a student trying to find OWTL versus finding Northwest Building O three, then you have, you have a different mindset. So it's campus character and quality, that's what we've been, we've been focused on lately.
Thank you.
It, it is a lot of layers, and just thinking back, if you go back east to some of these older schools that have the business building, and there's nothing going on there related to business, but it's been the business building for years, and so it stays named the business building, okay? And so we're not alone in this. But I do want to warn you right now that this is an expensive engagement, okay? And this is why a lot of people don't do it. Oh, you're just renaming it? Why we gotta spend that much money and we end up, well, we'll just stick with it. Well, my recommendation is that we not just stick with it, that, that it is something that needs to get done. Because again, we've got new students coming in all the time. That's who we're trying to serve. We're not trying to serve the fire department in naming buildings or, or anything else, or legacy. So if it's, you know, this activity happened here, so that's what we call it, you know, the N E B building, Northeast Business Building. Well, I mean, Northeast doesn't, business doesn't happen there and that kind of thing. So, but I do, I do want to warn you that, as you can see, it is quite engaged and it is expensive. And to Reg's point around, you know, everything talks to something like a plug or whatever, you know, and it was really fascinating to, you know, to, you know, to be enlightened with that stuff.
Okay.
This is the Southeast Building and the Level Two of that, again, this is the new building, and primarily again for, you know, business, for the student onboarding process, for financial aid and business support, transfer and dual credit there as well. So again, a student comes into that building and they get all their needs addressed, as well as assessment. So as you can see, that, that building is going to provide for a concise, one-stop-shop for the onboarding process. The Academic Building, primarily again, is a lot about the classrooms, and so the, this is the new and expanded Culinary Arts with multiple kitchens and dining spaces that were asked of before. So that will be inclusive. This building is kind of, you know, as you, it's tiered, if you will. So there's the second floor, one place, but there's not a second floor, other places and such. So you really, we'll have to go back to the overall master plan to see that. That's why you see that white space there. So, so again, the question was asked about the kitchen space, and you can see, see the commitment to that. Okay. In the Academic Building, again, it does have, you know, in some paces, a Level Two and to provide for classroom and lab space, and particularly, this is the science lab space of, of this particular campus, as well as the faculty area, neighborhood and student, student engagement. It's important that, that the adjacency of the faculty and support for the science courses and labs be just that, be adjacent, more so than a lot of other disciplines because of the, the nature of the, of the discipline. And so we've accommodated for that. So where maybe, you know, sociology faculty member doesn't necessarily, is critical for them to be adjacent to a certain classroom, science is. And I think this is our last Southeast slide, and that speaks to the Level Three of the classroom. And again, it is, it is a science lab space as well as faculty support. So for economies of scale, these are, you know, when you're running gas lines and water lines and, and as well as fuming for science, that we designed it and such that it is economical and efficient, so it's stacked, if you will, in this building in the second and the third So I'm gonna stop there because we have gone through the, the integrated planning. And again, the whole goal and objective before we move forward here was to ensure that, that we had a real good understanding that our planning process is integrated as it relates to what we said we need in terms of programs and services, how the building, how the spaces are designed to meet those programs and services, and then certainly the bond program helps support that whole effort. So I'll stop there and, questions or if you want to stretch your legs, Teresa?
I just wanted to have, just say that I think this is so important. I know I wasn't here when the bond was done, y'all did all that great job and the reasons that you all did that, that was really great. But as I'm looking at these slides and talking about the upgrades, it becomes so important because when you go to our high schools, I call them Taj Mahals now, some of the high schools are just really, really great, and we had the opening of a couple of schools in Mansfield, elementary schools that have, that also STEM academies in the elementary school for fine arts and languages. And the, the classrooms are like this, different types of seating where they can rock and work on their core or little seats that rock, just different types of environments that the teachers are teaching these children in. And when they leave their, those types of schools and come to the college that's really structured and it looks different, then that kind of makes, doesn't incite them about going to school. So these upgrades and changes are, I believe, are really important to, for our students to feel really good about coming to the, to the community college, to our school, after they're leaving their schools, to, and feel like they're moving forward and not either marking time or stepping back.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everybody.
Your microphone.
Do I press the one that, microphone with the X on?
No, it's the voice.
So what's the current enrollment and what is the target enrollment that the facility will service in the future?
Yeah, that Southeast Campus, I can't recall the enrollments. We had the square footages and what those, but we can certainly get those. What we did accommodate for is up through 2035, I think.
Okay.
I believe. So it's, it's, we really looked at square footage and not so much enrollment, although that's tied to it. But I, I don't know if we have that here or not.
That's fine.
Okay, we can get that for you.
Chancellor, can you just talk very briefly about who, some of the groups that were involved in some of the decision making? Because I know this is a huge collaboration. So you have the principals, you have the JCC, you have staff. If you could talk a little bit about who's involved in that and these decisions, please.
Sure. So there's different layers and it runs through a structured process. And so you saw, I spent time talking about how we got to the goals and the principles and all that planning. Each, each principal then has, had a champion, and the champion was a president or vice chancellor to lead and guide each of the eight. And so it was intentionally designed, somewhat siloed, to ensure that they do the work specifically for that. And I'll get back to that in a second. As they looked at that work, and it was all self-generated, clean sheet of paper. So if, Illy, for example, who needed to be at the table? Faculty, instructional leaders and such. They formed panels on different concepts and different ideas around the principal. So let's say Student Experience, you had the onboarding, okay? ISSM, Student Success Model, you had barriers, you had tutoring, you had, you know, different topics, if you will. So panels were brought together around topics related to the principal. And those panels did their work as it relates to idea generation. That came up then to the, to the entire principal, okay? And so let's say, just for argument's sake, you had five panels, and those five panels then represented the work of the entire principal, okay? So that, that, those five things, if you will, then were looked at by the, the principal leadership and the folks involved in the principal itself and said, these are, refine them, these are ideas. They then took, each principal would take their work to what we've referred to as an all-champions meeting. And that would be where the champions with the support, program management support, would bring all the ideas together, if you will, in a, in a big umbrella. And that would get vetted and ferreted out. That, the, the, the result of that would then come to the, to the cabinet, which is the decision-making governing body of the college. And that includes, you know, campus presidents, vice chancellors, JCC, the chair and chair elect, and that is the decision-making, you know, group, if you will. So that's how the principal work got endorsed, okay? When it came then to the planning of the buildings, they were, you know, somewhat, obviously those two campus-based, but the activity that's going on with the architects, with the construction managers, with our owners rep and Jacob's, and with Air Saint Gross really providing a lot of the connection, so now all those ideas to be implemented and to be shown in the building were then, you know, represented to those, to those entities. And so Air Saint Gross very much is the link between the work of the principal work as it relates to the physical facilities. And so that is the, you know, the, the quality check to ensure that in fact, what's designed is what was intended to be designed by the principal work, all the way back to the panels, okay? And so that's the connection of everything. And now it's up to the designers to design and the contractors to build. And that's, that's kind of very rough, but that's of our, you know, the, the big picture of it. But there are, in each decision-making point, there's accountability for it, and it resides in those that are responsible for and the ones that are going to live the activity. So the panels were very much made up of the people that are gonna work. So we had to talk to the advisors and supplemental instructors and so on as to what, you know, what their needs were. That got fed up through the principal, principal fed it through the champions, champions fed it through cabinet, and then that's how the, the decision-making process went. In all of this, a lot of dialogue, a lot of engagement, as you can tell, and much, and the work is done by consensus. And people have different ideas, but to my knowledge, we've not have any, had any outright discrepancy, if you will, or pushback on any of it, certainly as it relates to the people in the room that are there charged with representing, whether it be Learning Commons or representing the faculty or whatever. So we tried to, again, push the work, the generation of these ideas down to the people that live it, and students were involved too. And then, and then to bring that back up and then make it a reality, if that helps.
Any other questions, comments? No? Shall we proceed or do y'all need a break? Need a break? Okay. We're gonna take just five minutes? Is that okay? Stretch break? Thank you.
Sure.
We've got some folks, I think it's just.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, very fluid, flexible. The responses we're trying to on a regular basis. The coronavirus has changed some of our needs and our priorities. And so, how students get to and through the college is a priority. And I'm escalating it as a very high priority. I know you all, you know, we all get calls here and there. This was difficult, that was difficult. Often, it's the structure, not necessarily the people, but the structure in which we engage our work and then in turn, our students, what they experience. And so, in the coming months, there'll be some, very likely, some alterations to how that looks in order to respond to that, to that reality. But I did want to share a little bit about enrollment. And that's been asked about a couple of times. And we often look at the top 10, if you will, colleges in terms of comparing ourselves within the state. There are 40 community colleges in the state. 10 of them look similar and 40 look similar. But those similarities are very different. The Urbans and then, than the Rules. So if you eyeball this for a second, this is for fall semester. And as you look at it, let me share some things, both locally as well as nationally. In the community college sector, the nationwide, community colleges lost 30% of their black and brown students last year. 30% decline. Nationally, there was a 15% decline in enrollment nationally overall. So keep those couple of things in mind. Let's look at the numbers just for a second. And I, I don't, the percentages aren't there, but I think you can eyeball them and I can share them with you. Lone Star for the fall was off 13%, Dallas 23%, Alamo 4%, Tarrant 8%, and Houston 20%. We tend to look at those as our peers. They're most alike us, multi-college, multi-campus, in big urban areas. SandJack is about half our size, El Paso is about half our size, Collins, less than half our size, but they still consider them the big 10, if you will. And so, as you look at that comparison, you know, we're, it's not good to lose enrollment, but we're, you know, better off than most. Where was enrollment lost? Primarily here and nationwide was first time in college students. Many of our first time in college students come right out of high school. You've heard me talk about T3, an initiative here locally. There were 1,800 students signed up for T3. Only 500 materialized on our front door. So, I'll give you an indication of what the impact. And that was similar nationwide. First time in college, right out of high school. A great deal of drop, in fact.
So what was the expectation?
Well, you know, you would hope 1,800. 1,800 had signed up for it. This is the first cohort group. All the navigators were not yet hired. So it's still somewhat in transition, so I want to be fair to it all. I don't think you can point for a particular reason. I just want to emphasize that even that effort, which was intended to recruit, and those students were signed up to do so, didn't make it. A lot of those students, the program is designed for first time in college students because they need a lot of TLC. They need a lot of handholding. They need a lot of assistance to get to the front door. And it didn't happen. And that's two years in a row now, given last year and this year. So, that's significant.
So can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe it's not our call, but, so are we circling back to those eight? I'm sorry.
Circling back to those 1,300 students?
I had a discussion with the leadership of T3 a couple of weeks ago, and that, that is their plan to do so. They're the ones that have that data.
Okay.
And, and I, and they said, we don't, we don't know where they are, what happened. Most of them are probably home.
Yes, and so I just wrote down some things that I want to share. And this is a, because I think that we need to go into an enrollment recapture mode. And that is not only for the people that were already at our campus, but for those that we were intending to be at our campus. Because let's just say that people are out there in the hinterlands. They need contact and they need the TLC. And my idea about that is that you need to engage people from their community and from their level to help make those contacts. And as, as much as people are displeased with the US Postal Service, I mean, that should be included in the plan, as well as any mail, which they may or may not have access to check, or a text message, which they may or may not have access to check. And, and not only on postcard maybe, which won't come back to you, but a letter, which might come back to you and let you know that they've moved or something. I think that that is an essential piece of our entire community moving forward, both economically and educationally. We, there's a lot of discussion out there about the students that are in school, public school age, having lost. But that loss goes deeper and it will have a greater impact from the high school, recent graduate, recent dropout, recent college at level, than it will for the younger level. And so that's why I think you, Chancellor, and TCC is ideally positioned to push for that and to help lead that effort. Because we are accustomed to working with students who need that extra help. And we know what can happen if we give students that extra help and get them to our campus and through our systems. And so, that's another job. I think that likely nobody else is going to do it. And I think it's imperative. It'll make a difference for our enrollment next year and then the five years ahead, but it will also have a tremendous impact in the community. I just added something to your plate.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to make a comment as well on that. Last, in our workshop, was at our meeting, we had a really good presentation from our marketing department. I know marketing is, but what I got out of that was that the mo, the focus of that marketing is on the students. And I, I was very pleased to hear about that, about all the, I don't do Facebook or any of that stuff, but all the efforts that the marketing department is doing, I think, I think that's part of the recruiting process. That we're, we're, I think we're, we're kind of on that roll right now. I think I saw one college email to me talking about comeback. And I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not real sure that our marketing department's doing that, but I think that's a good, good, good start, at least, what our marketing department's doing.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
Well, I would echo what Dr. Morrison has said. I, I think this needs to be, warrants considerable effort to follow up and figure it out.
And campaign.
And the long-term, the long-term impact on our community, our society, is significant.
Yes. And another group that we don't recruit to, I don't know that we recruit to, is employers and management workers at the fast food level. And I, I think that they can become great partners for us. Because you've heard the saying, if you want something to get done, ask a busy person. And so, a student that is fully engaged, that is working, that is going to school, that has financial means, is a more successful student than a student who's floundering, who doesn't have a job. Maybe they go to school, they're not sure how they're going to get there. You know, they may not have a cellphone, it's not connected, all of those things. And so, I think that that is a great potential partnership for us, even to start with, for instance, like the McDonald's Owners Association. Because as an owners association, they, along with other employers, or they're recruiting, they're needing people. And I think if we engage employers as a part of, as a recruiting partner, it will be very beneficial to us and very beneficial to them. And I would say one more thing. I love the commercials that I've seen that have focused on the entire family. When they talk about the student coming back to school, they've shown the multi-generational family. And I think that is very important for us to realize that it's just not one person going to school, that it's an educational experience that the whole family engages in. And that's what makes it most successful.
I think that a number of the, the points that Dr. Morrison brings up in terms of enrollment recapture are not unique to Tarrant County College or to community colleges in general. But they're also things that our neighboring school districts are working through right now in terms of their own enrollment roundups. And I think that what we've been able to see is that this is a trend that is evidencing itself as being something that's systemic. It's not going to go away this enrollment year, and it's not going to go away next enrollment year. But I do think that there are some really good opportunities to collaborate with our, our larger school districts in identifying what's unique about this, this period in time and how to, how to solve for future enrollment declines based off of, of some of the things that they're working through. So, I think, I think it's a great opportunity to collaborate.
These were the fall numbers. Here are the spring numbers from the same institutions. I mentioned too, that nationally, the enrollment of women is significantly impacted. We, we didn't lose at the same rate as nationwide, but we, again, we did lose. And, and again, you'll see that, you know, Lone Star was off about 5%, Dallas about 20%, Alamo 8%, Houston 14%, and we were off 6% in the spring. So again, that's, you know, nothing to write home about, but others suffered more, much more than, than we did perhaps. I'll also offer one other thing. We did not lay off a person as a result of an enrollment loss. Not one full-time person was laid off. Hundreds of people were laid off at these other institutions.
Well, I think that speaks to your management of hiring and not only over the year, but also, you know, over the past one or two years and your attention to that. So I think that's very positive. However, we do know that we are a substantial part-time employer. And so, we know that has a role and impact. But I think that is great. That's to our credit, that we did not lose full-time employees.
Dr. Chivonini, this is really good dialogue. This is good information. These numbers that you're, is this full-time?
Headcount.
It's just a headcount, okay. So this does include also those that are taking CE?
No, this is credit.
Just credit?
Credit headcount. Now CE was very impacted, because most of that is in-person. And it was, we did have online offerings. We made switches. But, you know, college for kids, senior events. You know, most of the CE was greatly impacted.
Okay.
But I'm talking 75% of the stuff, we couldn't do.
Okay.
Because it just, it just wasn't feasible.
So have we actually made phone calls to some of these folks and just said, you know?
There's a lot of things and there's more to come.
Okay.
Speaking.
Okay. You'll get to that.
But yes. So, again, you know, given all these factors, one of our highest priorities is putting in more collaborative model in place for better enable students to get to and through TCC. The teams that have made recommendations, and I plan to work with them in the coming weeks to begin planning some of those that have come forward. Work involves closely monitoring key data points, as, as had been mentioned, around connecting with students, entering students, progressing students, completing students. You know, there's a lot of terminology used. I call it the enrollment funnel through completion. You know, some call it the assembly line or whatever. But whatever you want to call it, it needs specific and direct attention. It requires a collaborative approach to bring resources together, including institutional research and institutional effectiveness to support enrollment. If you don't have data knowing what you're looking at and you don't, you can't. You know, it's like a doctor trying to make a diagnosis, okay? Without any tools. You can't do it. And so, I just want to, you know, share with you again, that as you've indicated, there's action that needs to be taken and we are positioning to do so. Another area of program and service planning is our efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And just from a historical perspective, five years ago, we initiated strategy on the work related to, you know, 3G and 8P framework and, and also saw that there were gaps as we began doing that work in our systems that impacted access and completion. You know, things like transportation, access and use of technology, financial support, barriers, food insecurity, childcare. As we began, you know, doing the work of the 3GAP, these things became not only, and not that they perhaps were not known, but really understood. And, and so you can't address these things until you really understand them, what's the best method in which to do so. And some of those things needed immediate attention, like access to childcare and transportation. And we, we did make some headways in there. And I did take those up, you know, personally, if you will, as well as a few food insecurity and the emergency fund. So all of those were efforts, and not that we're done with those at all, but those were efforts that were initiated. And, and I asked the principals to take up because, and look at it deeper, because we need much more sophisticated systems of delivery and support. And so, so enrollment is just one of those, all right? And so if you're going to go through the enrollment process and these are issues and barriers, that has to be interwoven. That has to be collaborative. That has to be an integrated understanding and direction to satisfy and meet the students' needs. Otherwise, you know, if they can't get there, they can't enroll. If they, if they don't have food, they, you know, they're not going to be successful and so on. This is all interrelated. So there's much more of a, of a, of an eye towards that. I think we've made some advancements in, in some key ways, but equity issues are going to, are going to continue. And it's going to be continuous work. And so we're not going to rest on what we've done. We're going to raise it to a higher level and, and a broader institutional approach and, and really delve in, in, you know, in segmented areas like enrollment, okay? Or employee engagement. And we'll talk a little bit, a little bit about that. Because all this stuff is, is linked. And so, you know, COVID has really brought to light a, a lot of, maybe perhaps what we understood and knew a little bit, but really to light from a better understanding of the need, of the, of the requirement to integrate in a collaborative way to address these things. They're not one-off stuff, okay? And so, that's what, you know, we learned most of all, and that's how we're going to move forward in order to, in order to address. Specifically around equity and inclusion, we, after some, some personnel change, we had, had hired a new leader in January of 2020. And the opportunity was to ensure that, we are actually 2021, that we ensure to make equity and inclusion a part of everything we do. So our approach was, our efforts in this area have to be interwoven and seen in the work that we do every single day. This is not a one-off activity. This is not waving a flag or a banner or a particular event or activity and calling it a day. This is really very much looked at, that this needs to be in every way within our fabric of everything we do. Not a separate effort. The intent with the new hire was to make equity and inclusion a part of every decision and every consideration in the college. That's why it was embedded into the principal work. And so, the DEI lens needed to be, and needs to be, to continue, needs to be present in all the work that we do. So, in the last nine months, we've had somewhat of a consultation. A consultant on board who's done an excellent job, and Eric Castillo, and recommends, recommendations he brought forward to me recently to include near-term, mid-term, and long-term recommendations to dive deeper, deeper level into embedding DEI into the fabric of the institution. There are about 10 near-term recommendations, about nine midterm, and about seven long-term recommendations. So, so there's a roadmap there. So we really got a consultation, basically, based upon his observations and engagement with individuals across the college, embedded into the principal work, being able to see what's done, observe not only, you know, the work it is, but also what was produced in terms of on paper and such. And so, I want to highlight just a few of those that, that have come, as part of those recommendations. First was engaging an external firm to do an institutional audit so that we can clearly articulate our strengths and opportunities as it relates to key DEI indicators. So this is very broad, very umbrella-ish, if you will. But will really give us a good, probably, climate pulse check. Next would be to build stronger, more intentional collaborations between Student Development Services, Student Activities, Inter-Cultural Networks, Students Equity Inclusion Councils, and the Office of Equity Inclusion. So what's being referenced there is, we have a lot of work in the DEI umbrella going on, a lot of different places, but, but has not been intentionally brought together to ensure that it is, you know, one effort, if you will, okay? So that's it, that, you know, that's the Reader's Digest version of that. Developing in awards, honors for students and employees who advance DEI efforts is another recommendation. Create additional DEI training opportunities with partners across the college. First, a particular note, and this will be done, is that I am requiring the cabinet to begin DEI-centered learning and engagement experiences in the next few months. So part of the recommendations was around training and as well as continued awareness around DEI. And so the, the cabinet will be engaging that in the next few months. Sure.
What is the, what is the, I guess, the concept or the content of that training? Do you know?
I don't, don't know yet.
Okay.
And that's not for me to.
Yeah, I was just curious. No, I was just curious, because that's something that, you know, if we were going to be, because I see here asking who were to join in the modeling. So I was just wondering.
Right, so you're reading ahead of me.
Okay.
That's all right.
See that little smart student there?
I'm sorry.
That was the question before the teacher gets there.
So, yeah, the board doesn't have to make this decision today, but again, I'm asking the board to join the cabinet in modeling that commitment through training. And that training may be very different than the cabinet training. I'm not suggesting it'll be together or, or even a similar training. I don't know what that is. Alls I know is we're going to make a commitment towards that. And if the board wishes to, something they wish to decide, engage in, we'll work, you know, perhaps we work that within, we talked about a February retreat for the board. Maybe we work it in there. So that's plenty of time to decide when and to really vet what, okay? So, I'm really giving you a little bit of advanced notice here of some of the conversation related to the recommendations we had before. I'll be sharing these full recommendations with the cabinet. They have not seen them yet on October 6th. So that's, I, we've not given it sunshine yet. That's usually our process, the cabinet. And then after that, we'll be sharing the information with the rest of the, the whole, all those recommendations through the rest of the college, including the board as well. But I gave you kind of a little insight into, they're broken up into near-term, mid-term, long-term, and there's about over 20 and 26 in total. Yeah, all right. So we got a real good consulting report is what we got. And so, spending the time, Eric spending the time to observe, to listen, to learn about the place. And that was about five or six months, but a couple of months putting that report together. And I just received it within the last two weeks.
Jeanne, let me ask you a quick question.
Sure.
I guess I have two questions. One, is this ultimately, this is a continuing process?
Absolutely, yes.
And where, I'm curious about the timeline on it. And I guess I'd say where we would be a year from now rather than yikes.
So what we have right now are 26 recommendations, 10 of them pretty immediate, another nine or so midterm and then long-term. We'll have to, you know, the implementation, the implementation plan has not been developed. So when you say, when you ask the timeline, I'm not sure what we're going to do. I told you what we're committing to, that training off the bat. There are other things in the, the recommendations that may be contingent upon something else happening, okay? Until we begin vetting all of them in terms of what is the implementation plan for each one of those recommendations, I, I don't know at this point.
Well, my sense is the majority of the board is very supportive of this effort. I believe the board should be supportive of it. And I, I think I would ask that you keep us abreast of the progresses that's being made in this and what's going on. I think this ought to be a priority for us to monitor as it progresses. Thank you.
Now we, now we can have some further discussion. Anyone else? Thank you for that comment. Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead.
Maybe piggybacking off of that last comment. I do think that it is important, as we navigate through this process and receive additional updates on it, that there are opportunities for board check-ins on just making sure that, that we all have a common reference on the framework of diversity, equity, and inclusion and what that looks like at TCC. Because to your point, this, this is very interwoven into a number of the functions of the campus. I mean, it's, it's holistically woven. But how, what that looks like and how that's operationalized, I don't know that everybody has a common reference to that. And I think that it would be really more productive for, for the work of this board together if we knew going into it that at least we had the same understanding of what it looks like, whether that's through tenure and promotion or hiring or student enrollment, student success, those types of things, so that we're not just having that same conversation every single time one of those new programs or the first introduction of a program to this group is had. Because I, I can see that taking up a lot of time, every single board meeting and work meeting.
I could, I could agree with that. And I think that we should have that framework discussion earlier rather than later so that the board gets that common understanding of that. Because I'm, I'm sure we each have our own ideas, our own experiences and our own perspectives and reference point, but it's very important that we have a common, common base of understanding.
Right. Thank you for that comment. I, I think that we do have to have a common framework. And so, if we can get, I know February is what we're targeting, but that would be very helpful. Maybe even to give us some insight as to what, what are some things or expectations that a board, right, should, should set? What are the parameters? What are the questions we need to ask? Because I think, for me frankly, I wouldn't even know some of the questions we need to be asking. And we all have our different insights into what we think is a diverse, equitable, and inclusive environment. So I think it'll be, it'll be good that we can have that. So thank you for that. So, thank you for those comments as well. I appreciate that. Will we be able to hear from Dr. Castillo at some point as well, to be able to have him? Okay. Great, thank you.
You know, the, the first item of recommendation, which I thought was the most important, was the overall audit, because that will give us a real good direction. Where do we stand? And, you know, what is it that we, that we really need to pay attention to first, or most prominent? And then I think that'll speak, perhaps, to training as well. And again, there are people around the country that, that can zero right in, and working with boards as it relates to, you know, framework and development, or, so, this is not, you know, something that we will all, will home-grow, for sure.
Right, right, okay. Can you talk a little bit more about what, what an, what, I know what an audit is, but can you talk about what we expect that audit would entail? I'm sure it's probably pretty lengthy. It'd be an outside auditor, correct? And, you know, could you talk a little bit about that?
It's already been done, right?
No. So, I think it really, has not been done yet. I think what it'll really do in a broad way, so, if you want to, I assume, there'll be, this is my language, DEI indicators in this audit. What are our strengths and what are our opportunities in those? So, I think it'll be, so where do we stand, relationship to these indicators? And whether those indicators are a framework or not, I don't know. I'm not, I don't, the nomenclature may be different, but I think that, that's a starting point, that there are well-known, documented, industry standards, if you will, that should give you an indication of where you stand related to DEI, okay? And, and that audit will uncover our strengths and our opportunities as it relates to those indicators.
Is that an external auditor that comes in?
Yes, that's an external, yes.
Okay, okay, great, okay. So, once that's conducted, then that, the next steps would occur, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, there may be some things in the recommendations that can be done without that, or prior to that, or in conjunction with, I don't know, because I, again, we didn't get to the timeline to laying that out, but that is certainly critical to moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would envision, yes, it's, it's one of the first things to be done.
And who, does Dr. Castillo's office facilitate? Do they drive this audit?
Well, if we're going to go to, and I would likely do it some form of an RFP, or RFQ, or whatever, and some form of solicitation.
Okay, okay, all right.
And, and in that RFQ, we will have, you know, a scope of work that we want done.
Okay, okay. Do you have another comment, Dr. Morrison? Okay.
No, that's mine.
Okay. Anyone else? Did you have a comment, Mr. Greenhill?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, this was good discussion. Thank you, Chancellor.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about the employee experience. And there's certainly an area of opportunity here for the college. You know, the workspace environment has made several recommendations related to improving the employee experience, so that is part of the principal work. And frankly, we need support in place in order to implement and advance those recommendations. So, in this fiscal year's budget, we have added six positions to the HR department, and I'll explain in a second. This, that recommendation coincides with, we've been working with an outside consultant on a regular basis in HR to really look at a lot of aspects of our HR and employee relations, and human relations, talent recruitment, and all of that effort. So, the recommendation came from there as well. So, not only did we discover this internally, we discovered it externally. And so, the Employee Engagement Department now has a director position, or will have a director position. There'll be two specialists and two coordinators devoted to that work as well, all-around employee relations, and we've also added a Director of Personnel Policies, Research, and Data. And so, the personnel commitment really is necessary in order to, you know, to, to give attention to the, to the, to the needs in this area. So, these were not previously focused on, frankly, and so, so really, if you wanted to look to say if we had any sophisticated system of gathering data, checking, you know, tracking, monitoring, that was not in place, not in place. And so, in order to be able to do those things, we need to establish, you know, staffing around that. And so, that's what we've done most, or in the process of doing now. So, this is really, a lot of it's been uncovered through the principal work, it's been covered through some outside consultants, and, and U.S. Board members have mentioned, you know, the whole employee relations, employee experience a few times. And so, this is an effort to begin there. This is some very rough data, and this will give you an indication of, one indication of our need for an ERP, because we can't get much rougher than this, and we can't get much more specific than this either, because we don't have the capacity to do so. But it draws a more clear picture as to why, you know, our ERP project is much in urgent need, because when I ask for information and data, I'm getting very, very rough, high level. And not that people are holding back, we don't have the capacity, you know, garbage in, garbage out, nothing in, nothing out, kind of thing, you heard that before. And so, I'm just being very blunt and direct with you, that we need to, we need to provide support for this area, in part, those positions. Right now, this requires that we pull information from several modules, and secure, and cross-reference in order to give information that's requested. It shouldn't be that way. And so, anytime you have to pull from various sources, you're going to have error, and you're not going to have complete, you know, complete data. So, really, what I'm doing is, is sharing the dirty laundry here related to trying to acquire data. So, the categories that we use to code employee departures are not all indicative of why the employee left. So, even though the, the systems that we have don't necessarily paint a clear picture. So, it's very imperfect, and so, no matter what we do right now, it's not certain, okay? So, we need to put in place people, process procedures, and the ERP will help a great deal here in order to be able to get at the good data. So, but this gives you kind of very rough of the separations within the last few years of what the college has, these are full-time separations, if you will, full and part-time, sorry, full and part-time separations.
So, do you define, according to this, what is a separation?
The person that actually left employment. Let me, go ahead.
Go ahead. I understand it's-
That's rough. This is a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more data, doesn't necessarily tell you anything in particular. I've run, I've assessed this different ways, number-wise, and grand ratios and such. There's not really much variation over year to year to year. We had one blip in 2019 where we had many more white separations than we did percentage-wise with, with other demographics.
So, on this data, Chancellor, we don't have access to, like, what departments they were in, reasons for departure, positions, do we not have any?
We may, we may, it may be in different places, it may be imperfect, okay? That's, that's the picture I've tried to point-
Right, right.
-that we could try to spend a lot of time pulling all this from a lot of different places, and maybe we'd have it, maybe we wouldn't, but at the end of the day, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily paint a complete, accurate picture. So, these, these are just the numbers of separations by part-time, full-time, and again, we have a lot of part-time adjuncts come and go, and so, that's not completely, you know, unusual for a lot of institutions. The percentages stay pretty similar across every, every year, if you will. So, there's really no change in terms of the percentage of white, black, Asian, Hispanic, whatever, that there's a trend of going up or going down, okay? What I can tell you that might give you a little bit of insight is that the turnover rate, so this is just separations, if you want to take the total number of employees we have, and what does this represent? Represents about 9.92, about 10% annual turnover rate, about 10%. So, that's what's consistent, if you will, for sure. This, this tells you just separations. If you want a reference to total employees, it's about a 10%, 10% rate annually.
Would you say that's typical of?
Well, you know, I've never really, frankly, looked at it from other colleges to say. I mean, you here today, you know, 30 and 40% turnover rate in places, and I don't know how accurate that is, but, you know, I would say, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, out of the, I mean, if it was 25%, I'd probably say, yeah, that would be somewhat an issue.
It would strike me there's a cost, there's a financial cost, but there's also a, for lack of a better term, productivity or effective education cost. How much of our employment, employees are faculty versus staff?
We have about 750 faculty. We have about 1,300 staff or so. We have, depends on adjuncts, that can be as much as 3,000. We have a number of part-time, I, I don't have that off the top, maybe we can get that before we leave here today.
The reason, excuse me, go ahead.
I was just going to ask for one more point of clarification. This, when this says separations, this includes voluntary separations and terminations.
Yeah, this is everything. So, I haven't categorized at all. This is people that were here and are no longer here, period. Could be resignations, could be terminations.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the important point that the Chancellor made is that if we didn't collect the data in the beginning, we could spend a lot of time trying to go back and pull every file, and look at it, and code it, but it might not give us, very likely wouldn't give a complete picture, because we didn't gather that data at the time, and, and it just really might not tell us a lot. But what it does tell us is that, as he said, as Mr. Barr said, that it may have cost us, it may also have saved us, because perhaps a lot of the people who left were, were senior people, so we may have saved money by them going. So, you can't, you know, you have to look at both of those sides.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for that. Chancellor, just going forward, just want to make sure that we are able to, we're going to try to track that sort of information around departments and positions, and, because it sounds to me, I know you're saying that we don't, not all of that is readily available, or we don't, we're not able to pull it, but I think it's important, because as, as a governing board, if there's some things that we need to be made aware of from a policy perspective, for example, that would help us to kind of, based on the data that I was asking you, you know, departments, positions, reasons for leaving, you know, exit polls, all of that information would be helpful, I think, for us. So, is that something we'll be able to track going forward?
We will try. I've tried to paint the picture, we don't have-
Right.
-refined systems to do that.
Yes.
We have data, we have it all over the place.
Yep.
You know, we could, we could attempt any one of those questions, or all of those questions. How reliable what we get back?
Right, I understand.
I'm not so sure what it would be.
I understand.
But again, we're putting resources and personnel to try to, you know, to, to speak to employee relations, talent, management, recruitment, development, all the things that we have, you know, global things that we've talked about that we need attention to, whether the data is, is a result of all, of any of that.
Right.
And we don't, we don't really have good systems, and again, I don't beat a dead horse, but the ERP would certainly help that tremendously.
So, then, brings me to my next question, then, you know, there's a, I know that we talked about climate surveys, but there's also things called culture surveys that I think are actually administered, that kind of, just kind of get a feel, and those are usually done for employees. Have we had a culture survey where it talks about, you know, what's the, what's the culture? What are you experiencing? What are some things that you're, you're not experiencing, you know? And I've, I've taken one of those before, so I'm just curious, do we administer culture surveys? Is that something we've done historically to our employees?
I'm not sure. We may have something like that, but I really don't know.
Okay.
We can, I can get an answer.
Okay.
Certainly today, if people are listening, and I will provide an answer for that.
Great, thank you. Because that information would be helpful, I think, for a board, for us, again, to see if there's some things from a policy perspective that we might need to be looking at, so, okay, go ahead.
You know, I mentioned last board meeting about Forbes identifying us as a premier place to work for public employees, and I wonder how they got that data?
I don't know.
They said they do interviews, and they do this, or that.
Yes, yes.
And nothing, to our knowledge, we didn't participate, to my knowledge, in any Forbes research, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to follow up relative to the climate survey situation, and I'm referring to the written response that you sent out in the last day or two. When will we go through this process again?
The, so, I think in part, some of it will be answered through the DEI audit-
Okay.
-because that is an aspect of, is a climate survey, both for employees as well as students.
It struck me that the response rate on this survey was lower than I would have expected, and, and that makes me question the process, and whether we're using the right process, and what we need to do to get a broader result, broader cross-section. A 5% response rate from, from students, I believe that is. It seems-
It's disappointing, but I will tell you, it's challenging for everyone. It, it just is, you just, and I don't know, I'm not in that business, I don't know what the answer is, but I know exactly, and I, and I understand, and I agree with you, but I've seen this many, many times, at many places, just a dismal response rate.
I've, I've had some experience in surveys over the years, and this kind of response rate is, is low, I think. I'm also concerned that the company that did the survey doesn't offer any interpretation in the survey, and to me, somebody that's a pro in, in this area can, I think it'd be interesting to see what some of our contemporary organizations, other colleges are doing in this area, and see if anybody else is getting better results. I think, I think this is important. I'd, I'd like for Tarrant County College to be considered one of the best places to work anywhere, certainly in the education world, and, and I think, I think we want to create that culture, and whatever we can do to, to improve it and continue it, needs to happen. Sometimes it's about money, sometimes it's about facilities, sometimes it's about the overall culture and the organization, and there are just a lot of moving parts here. I, I think this is a good effort, and I think we, I think the board, I for one, want to see our continued awareness of what's going on in this area.
Well, I concur, and I will say that if you talk to the people who are outside, and who are trying to get in to become an employee of TCC, it's a very good place to work. And if we look at the number of applications we probably have for every position, or we just have people applying in general, you probably find that it's a very good place to work. And that is a good indicator, but I think it is something that we should intentionally look at, monitor, and do our best to improve, not only for those wanting to come in, but for those that are here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention to that, Chancellor.
Yes, thank you for that, Chancellor. One other question I had for you, Dr. Morrison just made me think about it, is we do, from time to time, get inquiries about the, just the application process and responsiveness. Can you talk a little bit about what we're doing in that arena, please? Because we've had a lot of folks, good folks that have applied, and we just, you know, they're not hearing, so, thank you.
And, and, yes, and we do hear that. So, I will remind you that new executive director, executive director of HR came on board in, in January, and she's, she's, you know, burning it at both ends and trying to address a number of issues, and I think we've highlighted those, and that's one of them. The- The, of those six positions we talked about is around employee relations, talent management, and search process, and so it'd be much more. We have, when we have positions available, and I, and I think it's a matter of volume, frankly, that, of being able to get it, to get it done.
Well, to Dr. Morrison's point, there's people that want to work here, there are, and we want to, you know, we want to bring them on and we want to retain them as well.
Yeah, and at the same time, the office, and I want to give an explanation, the office does a lot of work other than that, you know, so even a lot of this 3GAP work as we look at the organization and positions, so they're constantly looking at staffing needs and what those positions are, what they're titled, what their grade, what the salary is, and so there's a lot of, and it's not in defense, I just want to explain that there's a lot going on in that office that we all, we all don't see every, every day. And that's not, that's not an excuse again, I just want, just an enlightenment that there's quite a bit that goes on, that we do need additional resources for in order to accomplish all of that. So that is new as well. So we didn't have a lot of that activity until we got, began getting engaged in this principal work as it relates to positioning and grading and titles and such. It's nice, maybe people do want to, you know, come here, maybe there are too many applications to go through, I don't know. But, but yeah, it's, it's, it is understood and we're trying to make efforts through the staffing, you know, the adding staffing there, and again, an ERP helps with that as well in terms of managing the HR process, and that's one of the bigger things that it does in addition to student and business services. But yes, it's, it's understood.
Any other questions? Okay.
So one thing I'd like to mention around our return to work, as we've returned to work, and we were very deliberate in doing that, and our eye always has been on certainly safety and security of our faculty, staff, and students. And in returning to work as we have in face-to-face, we really wanted to be sure that we were serving our students first. And I use that as a preference, that, that we understand that what's happened over the last year or so certainly has enlightened the world as it relates to work from home or remote work or different types of working, and we have, that has not gone unnoticed. But our, our focus, sole focus was to ensure we were serving our students. And so rather than get into engaging in vetting out other opportunities, we haven't done that yet, but we will. And so we will be engaging in, in looking at adaptive workplace models, whether they be remote or otherwise, and very likely engage an outfit to help us do that. You know, there's virtual collaboration tools, there's, you know, platforms, policies, practices around telework, there's different types of models, hybrid models and such. We don't have the expertise in that, and so we want to get that fully vetted and do that right. And so it's not that, it's something that is, is not desired, it is desired, but we wanted to be sure that we were back on our feet, if you will, in serving our students first before we engaged in that, that effort, but we will begin engaging in that effort, and likely it will produce some form of adaptive workplace model that we'll be able to implement. But I will say, the caveat going in will be, we will not compromise serving students and we will not compromise serving each other and serving students. And so whatever the answers may be that don't do that, I'm fine with, but that certainly has to be paramount, that we're not going to compromise the work that we're doing for students and doing for each other. So, more to come on that.
Okay, what, is that going to be incorporated with the DEI, or is that going to be something separate?
Something separate, I mean, I'm sure there'll be a DEI lens to it.
Yes.
But I'm really looking, really the real umbrella focus of it needs to be, how do we establish other work models?
Okay.
Okay? Well, the DEI lends to it, but certainly the priority would be, you know, what type of, you know, hybrid work environments might we have? What do they look like? And of course, you have, and you have to, in doing that, you have, whoever helps us has to know the work and what we do, and how, and the adjacency to the work to students as well as to each other. And then, you know, I'm sure there'll be layers to it, and I'm thinking out loud a little bit here now, that's dangerous, but layers to it as to, okay, so is there a two-day, three-day, you know, and what day and who's and when? And so I think as you get down, you start slicing it even thinner and thinner.
I know that there, Texas State, there's a college, I know there's, maybe more than one in Texas that's done it, so that might be a good model, we could at least tap into and see what they've done, because they've implemented it already. I went online and researched it, so.
They implemented what?
A hybrid model of having remote working, telecommuting, that type of thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any others, thoughts?
No, I just heard, I heard about that at the CCATT conference, and I believe that's a rural college that has difficulty of people, it's a long drive to a college campus, so it's almost essential that they have a new model because, you know, some of these colleges are in very remote places and have several districts, I mean, several places to go. So I think that that one was a smaller college that had to do something.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. I heard you.
You did, okay.
Any other?
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for the discussion, okay.
Okay, so our research staff, as vast as it is, as informed me, we have 2,399 full-time employees, 1,580 part-time employees, but that does not include adjuncts. And so you could add another, depends on the semester, 2,000 or so folks.
Total?
So we're looking at around 6,000 people probably, heads, full-time, part-time, that we're cutting checks to at any given time.
Would you repeat that? I didn't write it down.
2,399 full-time employees. 1,580 part-time employees, but that does not include adjuncts.
And so, ask them how many positions are authorized in the budgets.
Okay, that's, okay, got it.
Just, just gives you an overall perspective.
Yeah, yeah, it does. That's, that's a fluid, that's a fluid number.
But it has to be in the budget. If it's not in the budget now, they would have to get approval for it to be added this year.
Yes.
So, thank you for that, though.
You're welcome.
And thank you, staff. We know you all are really on top of it.
So we had intended for lunch, now it is here. There's a couple of things. One, we can give a tour of this facility before lunch, if you like, that's one. And/or, across the hall, there's a running video. In the video, five of our first graduates from the Everyday Entrepreneur Venture Fund, and they're really quite fascinating stories, and they're not very long at all, but it's a running thing, and it's in this room right over here, so if you want to stop in and take a look. And again, the Everyday Entrepreneur Venture Fund is something that we've initiated, and we have a fund there and just received notice from Bank of America of a $100,000 gift yesterday, so that fund is now over $600,000, and we are looking forward to a federal favorable review from a federal grant application, and hopefully it'll come in next week, that'll, that'll bolster that even more. And I'm not sure exactly what that will end up being, but it'll be significant, I'm sure. So, and that is our effort to help entrepreneurs, and I'll speak a little bit about it later as well, assist them in taking their ideas to market and commercialize. So they're really good stories, so five, I think we had nine graduates out of the first group, and there are five stories over there. So Reg, can you stand to do a tour? You want to do a tour? Of the facility here?
I'm going to go see the video, because I'm taking tours.
I took a tour.
So why don't we, we'll get arranged a tour, everyone wants to go on the tour, go on the tour, if you want to watch the video, the video, if you want to sit here, sit here, and then grab lunch at the same time. Okay? Is that all right?
I'll do the video.
Is that fine? Okay.
I'm going to do, so y'all want to take a tour?
Do you want to take a tour? Are you taking a tour of the facility here?
I have, this is the first time I've been.
Okay, okay. So you can do the tour first and then you can come watch the videos as well, I mean, you can do both. So are we supposed to?
I want to simulate.
Do we have a certain amount of time? We need to get back to the agenda, or are we good?
We're good, so we can.
We're good on time?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, dear, how are you?
We're going to break right now, okay? Thank you.
Your word.
Simulate, go flat simulate.
We're all set? I think so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the next phase here I'd like to talk through conceptually. Opportunities that are before us. Opportunities that are before us, opportunities that could be before us. And then, I want to, would like to walk through all of our real estate. Maps of each of the campuses and locations, so we can get a feel of what they look like. And what some of the opportunities that I'm going to speak of, where they may, may find themselves. So first, and foremost, we start with this. Fourteen percent of all the college students in this country are what you would call traditional. Fourteen percent, at a four-year school, some residential thing. Twenty-two percent of all the college students in this country are parents. So we begin thinking about public policy and funding and, and efforts around initiative. That's a reality. And, for the most part, it's a reality that probably is little known and certainly not understood. And definitely not addressed. I chaired with you prior to today, a draft of a proposal. And that's in response to work we've been doing, actually over a few years now, in discussing childcare and the opportunities for childcare. And what I wanted to do is share some of the specifics of that proposal, to get your, your understanding of what that engagement involvement there would be. Specifically, I see many of you are probably familiar with Child Care Associates. It's the organization that really administers a good bulk, if not all, of the federal aid and other aid that goes to the county for childcare purposes, some ninety million dollars, in fact. And they support or work with a number of facilities in the county. And working with the executive director, Cara Waddell, there for a few years, and certainly most recently, we've captured in that proposal, what we think would be a good approach for the college to take as it relates to expanding access to childcare for its students and its faculty, staff, and the community that surrounds our campuses. The proposal in general would be that we would provide facilities, land, support for the facilities and land and such. And Child Care Associates would actually run the operation. So it would be their operation, their staff, if you will, and they would be responsible for that. Digging down a little bit deeper specifically, when I look at location, demographics, opportunity, where might we start? And initially discussions with Cara was around one campus, and we, we discussed expanding that to two campuses. And so we were conceptualizing both the south campus and northwest campus, for those reasons, to begin there. It's a big lift for them to begin another entity, so two would be a lot, a lot, a lot to do. Conceptually, and this is mostly from, in speaking with the experience of those that have gone down this road. Today, which is very popular, is the use of modular units. They are not like the old trailers of years gone past, they're quite attractive and, and such. And so, if we were to look at an opportunity at both of those campuses, we would be looking at modular units. One modular unit is roughly somewhere between two and, two and a half million dollars. That's eight to ten classrooms. Two units on each campus, we're talking about ten million dollar commitment, if you will, in just the facility in itself. And then, our responsibility of, you know, ensuring that the, you know, we got to excavate the land and proximity to parking and utilities and things like that would, would be on us. And then Cara would, would, and Child Care Associates would program the space. And programming can vary, from drop-off to thirty-hour-a-week programs, zero to three ages, three to six, six to ten. All of that would yet to be determined through some form of vetting, and surveying as to what would be the best approach. And it may be different from a campus to a campus. So a ten million dollar investment, we are, we are in a position to be able to do that. And in a position to be able to make that happen. And roughly, it'd probably be about a twelve-month turnaround to get that done and operational. So I wanted to share, you know, that opportunity with you, as one, that is very, very viable. And I think, again, gets at a key barrier of our students, childcare. And, and certainly positions the college better in, in that arena. So you have that for you, I've said to you before, and I'd be happy to, you know, chat about any particular questions you may have about that. The other couple areas to speak about, a little bit less certain, but very viable in nature. And that is in the space of incubation, innovation, and credentialing. And, and those are, can take on a variety of different definitions, if you will. An example of incubation, innovation is just what you saw next door with the five EEVF videos. That is one college effort in the entrepreneur space. And we'll get more detail in a formalized program for that for you, to understand that. But, but basically, it is an opportunity for folks who have good ideas to bring them in front of resources to help them commercialize and get to market. And as you saw in the videos next door, it doesn't necessarily take a lot of money to do so. And so our EEVF is very strong, it's probably the best funded in the country. I think the only other one that was close was Hillsborough Community College in Tampa. This is a nationwide movement through NACY, the National Association of Community College Entrepreneurship, that I've been involved with for a while. And, and we're looking for more, a potential for some more significant resources in the next week or so, through a federal grant opportunity. There are a number of incubation, innovation-like enterprises in the county. Some government-supported, Tech Fort Worth, some privately supported, WeWorks, you know, coworking space. UNT Health Sciences has an initiative specifically around healthcare and innovation of healthcare and incubating companies. And they're all good, and they're all doing fine. I did share with you also, the pamphlet, if you, from the Center for Entrepreneurial Innovation that, that created back in, in Arizona some years ago. And I'm not proposing that, I'm just showing that as an, as an example of something that could be done. It's very different, it's different than what exists here today, it's very different than the EEVF. As you look through it, there's much more support around the entrepreneur. It's a different type of entrepreneur as well. When you get right down to it, the type of entrepreneur that you would be vetting for EEVF would be very different than CEI. It's very engaging, it's difficult, that's why you don't see many of them, it's in a heavy lift. And is it something that we could do? Is it something that we have the capability of doing? Yes, we could. Not necessarily, again, proposing it. It is something, though, perhaps, that might be of interest in some point of joint development with some private developer. Could we do it on our own? Yes, we could do it on our own. But again, it is quite engaging. The credentialing center, and if you just, you know, take a step back and consider the workplace and the work environment, what it takes to be a worker today, what folks will be looking for in their workforce. Forty-four out of the top fifty demand jobs in the country require something more than high school, but less than a bachelor's degree. Could be an associate degree, could be a certificate, could be something else. The gap between unemployed and the jobs available in this country continues to grow. It's now six million unemployed and close to twelve million jobs in this country not filled. Large part because there's no skills for that, those jobs. Those skills missing don't necessarily mean the need for a formal degree or certificate. Something I picked up the other day, it was quite interesting. If you were to look at all the twenty-one to thirty-nine-year-old people working in this country today, seventy percent of theirs' jobs will be significantly impacted, to be different, whatever that means, in the next ten years alone. So that's a lot of dynamic that did not exist all that long ago, all of those things. And that's the trend, and that's where it's going. We're sitting in a facility here that is, in this, this effort around corporate solutions and economic development is unique. There aren't too many institutions in the country that have dedicated something like this, in terms of organization, as well as the physical facility that you see here today. So, ten years ago or so, nobody even heard of things like this. So what's it going to be like ten years from now? What's going to be the new, quote, "thing" that colleges, or someone, is going to have to really respond to, related to serving the needs of the workforce and workplace? So me and my simple mind come up with the credentialing center, whatever that might be. Not necessarily credit hour, not necessarily certificate, not necessarily the degree. But something, some vehicle, some avenue, some means in which to recognize, acknowledge formally skill sets, competency individuals may have. You have, we have them already, in terms of different occupations that may have, you know, real estate license, or they have their real estate exam. And the, and the financial advisors have their Series Seven, you know, exam, things like that. And you have apprenticeship, and then apprenticeship, you get dubbed in a certain way. The point being, I, I believe, and there are a number of other people as well, that that is going to be more and more significant and more profound in the future. And that colleges, in fact, need to, someone needs to wrap around a business plan, a business model, to serve that. Because ever, every single day, there's going to be a need for what something like that would produce. So whether it's a physical facility, or just concept, and it's corralled in a manner in which we can deliver it, it could be any of those things. I'm talking with a few folks nationally around this, and we're looking at, that are in this, you know, in the credentialing business, as well as City Colleges Chicago, we're talking as it relates to, you know, one in the north, one in the south, of these kinds of things, these credentialing centers, center of the country, if you will, easy to get to. Easier to get to Love and DFW than it is O'Hare and, and Midway, though. So maybe we have an advantage there. Those that you've flown are laughing, because you know. Anyway, this is an opportunity, perhaps, with a private enterprise as well. I'm working with some private entities around badging in the technology field, and licensing technology field. And we hope to roll something out in the summer, it's kind of loose right now in terms of putting together, but I'm sure it's going to happen. But what it really does, in part, it speaks to the end game, and the end game being some form of credential. And so particularly in the technology field, they really recognize, really recognize it. So I don't know, I can't put a price tag or number to that, what it's going to be. I just want to get it out on the table, as it relates to, as we move forward as a college. So whether it be an investment in childcare, a CEI, Center for Entrepreneurial Innovation, will, in today's dollars, twenty, twenty-five, maybe thirty million dollars to build, a couple of years, a couple million dollars a year to operate, perhaps. Again, we do have the capacity to do that, or a credentialing center, and I don't quite, can't even put a dollar to that. I'm just putting this, the childcare, because we did the due diligence with Child Care Associates, CEI, because that's the experience I've had. I'm able to come up with a number, but not really able to come up with a number with a credentialing center. But I do feel, you know, strongly, that this is something that we should be paying attention to. Transportation, mobility, whatever you want to call it. I'll point in our maps, I'm going to show you the maps of the campuses, what some opportunities may be around transportation. And that includes roadways, that includes parking. As well as, you know, an ongoing discussion around mobility, and frankly, just bus routes. And it's no secret that we're way, way behind as it relates to mobility and the opportunity for mobility. It's quite interesting, I have been engaged with a couple of the new city council people. And of course, they have desires for projects in their neighborhoods. And I walk away with the same, and I've told them, each of them, when I, when I, all of them, when I've met with them, you know, they may want a certain activity, or a certain, you know, healthcare clinic, or whatever the case may be, in their, in, in underserved neighborhoods, or whatever. And I get it, and it's important, it's needed. But is that the most efficient and effective way to go about it? Are we going to build, for example, healthcare facilities in every single underserved neighborhood? Not that that's not a good idea, it's a great idea if we could do it, but what's the feasibility of it? I always walk away from these discussions that it's about mobility, it's about moving people to work, live, play, whatever the case, the need may be. And, and I just think that's the, that's the most efficient and effective way which to approach it. So we would very much be interested in a, an effort around the increasing of bus routes throughout the county. I've been in, in conversation with the people around transportation, both in the county and council, county governments, and TRB and others, related to these opportunities. And then the last I'll just put in is, you know, private development, could be anything. Could be any one of these, combination or something else. So that's just thoughts around potential opportunities, ones that I think are certainly mission, mission-centric, and could really advance and help the institution. So why don't I, at this point, and again, jump in at any time, just talk a little bit about our land. And so folks get an opportunity, they'll understand kind of what acreage we're talking about, and everything that we have available. Hopefully, this will point, okay, here's our, here's the whole south campus in white, okay? And you can see, you know, the center, thirty-some buildings on this campus, but it's the old liberal arts, small liberal arts college, nineteen sixty mentality, and that's when it was designed, and that's what was built. That's fine, presents its challenges today, but it works. As you can see, though, a lot of opportunity here, a lot of opportunity here. Some of the things that, that have been talked about, or people call and wonder about, or ask, you know, would you be interested in this or that? The childcare, as I mentioned, I think the credentialing thing as well. Because of the vast amount of job, I've been approached about housing, certain types of housing. There are different types of, of, different initiatives in town. One being in the environmental, and Mr. Barth has been, been engaged with that in a discussion as well, about environmental science, environmental national, some type of national training center, museum and such. So that's just one example. The point is, the south campus, because of its vast acreage, does present various opportunities that are, could be quite significant as it relates to land. Northeast Campus, beautiful campus, and it's in red here, okay? All right, it's all, all through here, okay? So you can see, again, center of campus here, the parking on the outskirts, there is land available here. Little unknown fact, the line, the North Richland Hills and the Hurst Line runs right about here. So the campus is in actually two different townships or cities, which so far hasn't presented a problem, but nevertheless, it does. A and B, we have sold. Correct? Carol, those are sold, aren't they?
No, A is the site for the oil and gas.
Oil and gas, no.
We had it in a contract at one point.
Okay, so these are, this one is those that we're looking at, right? B, yeah, B was one. So again, these are on the outskirts, you've, I think you entertained B recently as a board. But other than that, no real, I don't really have anything in, in the docket, as it relates to opportunities that have come here. There is a significant childcare presence already on this site, more so than any of our other campuses. But this is how the northeast campus lays out. Lot of development going on around it, a lot of multifamily stuff. Where are we here? Up in here, okay? You have the county facilities up in here and back in here, or, no, not county facility, that's the south, I'm sorry.
The land that we were proposing.
Which land?
To use for the.
Right there.
No, there's a center over on the other side.
Oh, and on here? One that we were going to build or one that is already built?
So the one that was proposed that we.
We do.
Yeah.
I think it was in here. I think it was right in here, right in this area here.
No.
Okay.
To the north and west of the Highway 26.
Up here?
In a town center, in the middle of apartments and whatever. There was a piece of property that was suggested.
Turn your mic on.
Oh, I saw it.
Are we talking up in here?
Up a little higher.
Or up here?
Nope.
No, just go to the right, to the right.
Maybe where that dense area.
Okay.
That dense area.
Be up a little higher.
A little higher.
Okay.
Right in there, that's the town, no.
Give me a.
In the dense area, the apartment's actually built out.
That's right, okay.
There you go.
Yeah.
So I didn't remember quite what the status of that was and Carol, do you remember?
The city has taken that property.
Back.
Well, it was always.
It was always theirs.
Right, and they are, have pursued a different development plan with it. They did, it was a multi, I don't know how far along they are, but they were turning it into, I think they called it a multipurpose center.
Okay.
Jean, I mean, you mentioned childcare is on this campus in building, in TCC owned and built buildings? And who operates it?
We operate it.
Okay.
Yeah. We have a childcare academic program there, so there's a history of, of that.
Is there potential for academic programs in the other, on the other campuses if we wind up moving in that?
Yeah, I didn't get into it, but there's a lot of opportunity for that, yes, exactly.
And that would be the, the.
Well, we.
Partner, partner organization would be interested in that?
Yeah, that, you know, they need workers, we could train workers, our students could work there, internships, you know, whatever. So yeah, there's a lot of opportunity around, around that as well as, you know, deeper into, you know, engaging the community and providing other resources through it. You know, operating it from some form of research, lab component, think tank type of, you know, there's a lot of different things that could be done.
Who are the potential clients and for instance, who are the, the clients, the, the, in, in childcare at the northeast campus?
Our students. I can get them.
They have to be students?
No, I don't think so. I think faculty and staff and I'm not sure if it's open to the public or not. We can get that.
Okay.
Highly sought after.
Well.
Well subscribed.
You know, you've, a number of times today in your comments, you've talked about staying student focused. I think of the things you mentioned, the opportunity areas while ago, childcare and transportation are two that most, are most impactful on our students. The incubator and the private development, those may be very important for the college district in the long run, but the, the ones that really impact the students are childcare and transportation.
Exactly.
Well, I would add to that however, as I was saying to someone the other day, when I started my career, we never were told to think about quote unquote a side hustle. However, the young crowd, even those who are fully engaged professionally or all have quote unquote side hustles. Whether it's an incorporated LLC consultant business or a craft business that they do on the side or an e-store where they sell their school, their lesson plans that they do for the, for their classes. Many teachers have e-stores and sell those to other teachers. And so it's a new concept. And so now the new thing is not to train students to get a degree, get a certificate, get a job, but it's to get a job and also have an independent business. And so I think it will help many of our students to, to grow that aspect.
That's a good point.
And if you look at, hear the whole stories, the EVF folks, those are the kind of thing, yeah, I'm going to try this, I'm doing, going to school for this, but I'm going to try this. And so it just opens up opportunity.
And you absolutely never know where those companies, those entities may go.
That's right.
That's why the EVF, investing in that to me is a little bit more, more pertinent, more, more valued than a full-blown CEI thing. Not that wouldn't want to do that, but, but in terms of numbers of people reaching and impacting.
So the census data is right out, so how are we using that information to kind of drive where we're going?
As far as childcare or anything?
Childcare, transportation, all these other items.
Well, I, it certainly will come into play as we put together rationale and proposal for that, yeah.
Okay, good.
I mean, I think you'd want to know that.
Yeah, no, I think it's really important. I think just from what I, well, I haven't seen the actual data, but I've heard that it's very reflective of kind of what Dr. Morrison was talking about, about the, that, that group, that age group, which is really growing, so, okay. Thank you.
Northwest. So all the white, inside the white, we own. This, these maps were provided through folks that we work with from commercial real estate. So they all look a little different. I tried to pick the best ones, so it's a little bit of a hodgepodge in terms of the orientation. But just forget the red line, but, because we do own one. And so, you know, there's the lake and you know, obviously it's, it's getting, you know, redeveloped, that core here. This is pretty much staying untouched. It's a lot of land, it's a lot of valuable land, right off 820 McGreen Creek. So again, like I said, the location, demographics, south and northwest for childcare at this point, that's what I would, I would pursue, but certainly there's a whole bunch of, of real estate here.
Master plan for that?
The one, no.
No, we don't have a master plan for one, okay.
No, we don't have a master for any of them, other than what we're doing through the bond.
Yeah, okay.
So there's no, no real plan for any of this land, nothing that we've committed to at all. And so that's why we're showing and good time to begin, given, you know, given the opportunities we have before us, given real estate in general, given where some of our campuses are. We're, it's, you know, before COVID, I'd, I'd get called, you know, regularly on some of our land, okay? All right. Southeast Campus, that's all in white, so 1, 2, 3, 4, we own, just for some reason it was parceled off by the commercial.
We don't know?
We do, we do.
Oh.
That was parceled off for the, for the real estate company that we work with. This is their, their map, if you will. And so we are going to use a little bit more land, as you heard on the development, but frankly, you know, it's not going to extend way out, okay? We're still going to be pretty contiguous in here. So we got 360 over here, so, and so there's, there's frontage to 360. We've had some, you know, inquiry on that, okay? So again, some of this is, is pretty valuable land. This is our smaller footprint, you know, in terms of campus wise. It's not like the south or northwest or in certain, northeast either, but, but it is, it is significant and it is in a desirable area.
And that area is growing.
The early college high school is.
Um, early, the orientation, I, I get lost here. It's up here.
Up in the top.
It's, it's right up here, I think, right there?
I think that's it.
It's interesting, it is far away from the rest of the campus in this instance. More, more so than other.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the history of that, if anyone around the table or.
Curious about how that works.
Carol, you remember how that happened?
I'm less concerned about how it happened than I am about how does that work as compared to what's at northwest? Between playing to northwest and so forth.
So the only thing I can think of logistically, if a dual credit course that high schools, these high school students are taking is down here. But my guess is it's not because it's, 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 you know, a complete, all-inclusive, early college high school, that all the courses are offered here. I mean, off the top of my head, that's the only thing I can think of that would be a disadvantage.
I do remember that when they were deciding where to site that facility, that particular site had a lot of utility infrastructure in place and it was going to be somewhat less expensive to develop as a result. And they were also concerned about disrupting the existing parking.
Around here, yeah. And all, it's probably a good decision.
It's just different.
Yeah, it is different, you're correct. Okay?
Good.
All right, now we can spend a couple hours. This is the Trinity River Campus Complex, this is downtown. So let me walk through what, what we, what all this is, okay? We'll start over here, Trinity River East, okay? Complex. These are the two buildings, health, allied health and nursing buildings, okay? Parking lot, parking lot, parking lot, parking lot, okay? This is where the.
Plaza.
The plaza is, the waterfall in our coffee shop or whatever, right here, okay? It's the waterfall that goes underneath and I think you all know what I'm talking about, all right? Very valuable land. Okay? Opportunities here, a couple. We've had discussion with transportation folks about parking structures here or parking structure across the street, it's county-owned facility. There are federal dollars available for these kinds of things. Taking an exit off 35 over to here, in fact, even over to the island and we'll talk about that in a second as well. So there are some transportation roads as well as parking facility opportunities. I've mentioned before that we, college has been involved in discussions with UT Health Sciences and Walmart. Walmart has, is, is, is getting into the field of direct care, primary care. Walmart has opened up Walmart Medical School in Bentonville, Arkansas. Someday, some child is going to come home and tell their parents they're going to Walmart Medical School. And so this is where things are going. They have piloted, they being Walmart, clinics and stores in Georgia. They eventually want to roll something out nationwide. They're considering DFW area for this. Mike Williams and I have been to Bentonville to talk to them about all of this. We hosted Alice Walton and the folks from Walmart in June for a couple of days about all this opportunity. They really want to get their medical school up and running. They're going to need our students in order to open these clinics and they're going to need doctors, doctors in order to open the clinics. They felt the best way to do that was to start their own medical school. Why am I saying this? We cited this as an academic clinic place where students could receive academic training as well as then provide direct services as a, as a clinic in, in this location as well, okay? So that's some opportunity here. Again, valuable land, could be a whole ton of different private development that could go on with this. Trinity River, or I'm sorry, Panther Island. Roughly eight, nine acres over here, 11 or so over here. There's the beautiful TXU power plant building. Come right across Main Street. And so obviously the whole island and you know, you know, a lot of the dynamics around, you know, core engineers and building levees and all kinds of things like that. We are pretty much not in the flood zone anyway, but nevertheless, there's opportunity here. I would envision whatever we do over here would be in some form of partnership, something other than what we currently do today. Maybe this is where an innovation center, incubation, credentialing center goes in partnership with the technology companies' corporate headquarters. You know, if, you know, just kind of think a little bit of what the potential may be. We don't, we want to be involved, but this is, I don't believe this is a case where you want to be the first one jumping off the bridge, okay? We want to do that with someone else. I understand the city does, already has secured infrastructure dollars for this. So, so if some developer were to come along, I think it could, could move rather, you know, expeditiously. So river, obviously very attractive. And so that's the, that's our Panther Island opportunity. You can see there's, there's a lot of, I was going to say SRP, but it's, it's encore.
Distribution.
Yeah, distribution, yeah, yeah. Okay, now we go over to Trinity River. Four towers, 1, 2, 3, 4, seven stories each, 30,000 square foot, footprints of each, okay? Fronts the river. So that's what we have and we own. Now, what's white? The site plan for this area calls for two more towers. So that was what was designed, you know, the site plan for, and another parking garage. So each tower of these are two, over 200,000 square feet. So conceptually, you could have another 400,000 square feet here in another parking garage. Obviously, good development opportunities, partnering, private opportunities and such that could, could manifest itself as relates to that.
Can you point out, you point out which is the, the building that houses the Tarleton today? Is it the one there?
Well, Tarleton is out Chisholm Trail now.
Okay.
And there in, if they're in, they're still in, in Clear Fork right here.
They're still in that one, right?
Yeah, they're still being Clear Fork, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
West Fork, Clear Fork, TR.
Okay.
East Fork.
Thank you.
So what little known is, here's Henderson Street, the bridge. The west side of Henderson, underneath there, you go underneath the bridge, walk under, this seven acres we own. And this is a lot where the staging activities take place for races and all kinds of things, okay? So again, valuable property fronting the river, you know.
Do we, does college, the district own the land between the towers and the river?
Right here?
Yeah.
To north of there.
Here. It's somewhere along the line, we don't. I don't know exactly where it's, where, where the, where the line is, pardon?
You're about right.
Yeah, right here?
So we don't actually own the river?
No, we don't go right to the water here, no. No, we do not. In fact, I'm not sure the legality, I don't even know if we go right to the water here because there's easement stuff here, I think that.
There's levy.
All of that, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to get technical about it. But I know we don't, we do not own to the water here. Somewhere around here is the line. Of course, you could cut in another, there is an entrance in here. I mean, you can make it bigger and accessible and then seventh. So that's, that's it as it relates to our, our real estate. Oh no, I'm sorry, we're here. I forgot. We are sitting in Alliance today, this is how it looks. And I say today because it's been a moving target for a number of years. We are right here in A, okay, in this area right here. We own B, we own C. As you know, we're in discussion with Hillwood on potential swap, could happen, of, of land. So plenty of opportunity here as it relates to development. This over here, we don't own, but I think it's vacant. So you want to look at possibilities and obviously there's nothing on this dirt here. Here's the taxiway, here's the runway. You know, there'd be a desire certainly for B to be airport related, needing for the hangar space, needing for the apron space to get out. So if that is developed by us or someone else, that's likely the prime use for something like that. All right, now I'll stop. And so that's, that's a run-through of our real estate and what I would believe would be some possibilities to, you know, to engage, to, to move forward on some of it. And what I would believe would be some possibilities to, to engage, to move forward on some of it.
I, I would just observe that there's been some forward thinking by the college's boards historically in acquiring the amount of land that's been acquired, which creates great value for the college and great opportunity. We're, we're sitting in an enviable position because of some visionary leadership in the past. Going, going all the way back to this devastation of the South Campus and the amount of land that was acquired for that. I think that's, that's a valuable history.
That's a very good observation. I was wondering too, that's why I asked about whether there was a master plan, whether or not they had some strategies in place about what the intent was. I guess they just anticipated that the community was going to grow and so, you know, it's, it's, they were very strategic along the line.
Yeah, I mentioned before, there was a lot of foresight given to the locations of the campuses not being on top of each other. You know, I, as you know, I came from Maricopa and if you know Phoenix a little bit, I came across an op-ed piece written in 1962 when the college decided to open the different locations. And the first two colleges, well, Phoenix College was already established, Mesa and Glendale. And you might not know the areas, but they said, who the heck would want to go to college out at Southern and Dobson and Olive and 59th Avenue? Well, those are now inner-city corners, okay? So to get an idea of foresight. Those are set up in six, they're set up in six-mile circles. Not, you know, not just to touch each other, not to overlap. Well, the, you know, Maricopa County Valley is, is huge now. So all those six are like, you know, in a lot of the core. So they're, you're correct, there's a lot of foresight related to that location then as well as the acquisition of, of the land.
So of course I wasn't here and I wasn't pretty to the conversations, but I know that there was some, you know, I would say, what I couldn't consider significant real estate minds that were in communication with the board and with Mayor Barr at the time, Mr. Herman Stute, Mr. Ward Collier were both, you know, prominent, I'm sure there were others, but prominent real estate people and citizens here who were, you know, in communication about the whole process. And, and I can't, also some people in the northeast sector. The name I remember is Ms. Geraldine Tarpley, but I'm sure there were others. And I just think that it's a wonderful legacy that we have. And to be well remembered, that, you know, it came together because there were community-wide meet town halls all over the county. And it, it has been, left us well-positioned to do something great. To do more great things, because we have done great things. And we've affected many lives in a very positive way and we continue to do that. And so today we're challenged with great opportunity and great privilege. We get to do more and that's a great challenge that we have.
Chancellor, could you remind me of the possible swap? Which, which, what we're talking about there?
Sure. So what has been proposed is, and again, this is a lot of client-based need from Hillwood's standpoint. And it really is, as I mentioned before, the, you know, accessibility of the airport, accessibility of the runway and the, and the hangar and the, and the flight path, whatever. So they're talking about right about here, okay? All right. In turn, we go over here. Okay, so that's somewhat of the swap. If you could follow the, the red guy.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So let's say, let's say just for argument's sake, half here. And I can't recall how much here, but it was a significant amount. Yeah, here, here's my thinking based upon, you know, multi-campus, multi-college and, and citing campuses per se. One, yeah, this is valuable land for here, okay? So I mean, you, so you want, we want to be a good corporate citizen or friend, if you will. If we got use for this, that, you know, we certainly want to help where we can. I don't think in the long run it makes a difference with the college. Let's say in 20, 30 years, we want to build a full campus out here. The only thing that anchors right now the campus is here. What goes on in this building is not a campus anchor, okay? It's not the, it's not going to be the core or center of a campus. If for some reason down the road that we're going to really develop, and I can see it, none of us may see it, but I can see it, it happening, a full-fledged campus here. This, this land, given its proxent, location proximity and, and opportunity, this is where you would build the campus. And maybe you have a little bridge going over here or whatever, you know. The, the future, let me just say the future, if there's to be a future, a campus here in the future, it's not around here. The other thing too here, this fronts 35. And so it's going to give you, unless there's another 12 lanes that cut it off here someday, but this, this fronts 35 and that certainly will have some value in, in the future. So, and then in the, you know, the possibilities go on. I mean, might, might some way we, we acquire all of this, okay? So now that's your campus, you know, all fronts 35. So I don't think we're handicapping.
Show me where we are.
We're right here at A. We're sitting in A.
Right, and so we go how far toward 35?
Here's 35.
Right, all the way to the right.
Here's 35, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So this piece, if we're swapping this piece, we get this piece, we're right frontage of 35.
Right.
Okay, now the exit's down here up here, but we're fine. Bottom line is, I don't think we'd be compromising the future of the college at all.
If we swap them, B?
Yeah, yeah, I don't believe so.
Well, I can certainly see, as I was saying, when I started driving to TWU in 1973, I told the chancellor there was, when you left A-20, there was an Exxon at, at the Argyle exit. And there was nothing else until you got to the NT exit, UNT exit, or the University Drive exit. And, and over the years, you know, of course, you see what it is today. But I certainly can visualize the need for this area because not only if you look at the rooftops and the commercial development, but if you study the high school, the public school, the charter schools and the private schools that are in this area. Yeah, I would see that that might be a real possibility.
So this across, this is the old, was it GM Financial or Mercedes Financial?
Mercedes-Benz.
Yeah, we were offered this when it was up and we passed on it. And I didn't think it was appropriate at the time to bring it forward. Just, it's a facility that would need renovation and everything. But we'll keep your, keep our eye on it, given though that we have this, this land here. They have this land here and possibly over here.
That property, or whatever that building is, it's just to the left of C? What is that, yes, what is that there?
They have refueling.
Okay.
A station here. There's something else here too. There's a company here.
Okay.
And then there's the big refueling for the airport here.
Okay.
There's, there's probably mechanical here that you don't want to mess with.
Well, that's what I was thinking. So pretty much C is pretty much landlocked to the left, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it is, it is. But that's okay.
But that's okay.
Because it's just going out to the runway and this is, this is probably infrastructure, the piping and things like that that we couldn't.
We couldn't touch it anyway.
It would just be, you know, yeah, would be, and the Hillwood wouldn't be giving that up. But there's a corner here, you know, for what it's worth. We used to have this land up here and we swapped it for this.
Okay.
Right.
Years ago.
That's right. Okay. Interesting. Any questions on the property? Comments?
Okay.
Thank you for this update.
Certainly. Carol, you have the floor. You want to take a break?
Yep. Carol, can we take just a five-minute break?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll be back in a while, I'm sure, if that's okay. Thank you. Thank you.
It can't be changed by us. It's not adopted by the Board. Tasby regularly updates legal policy as needed, mostly to address changes in the law or case law that happen to us, and then we are notified. So then you go on to local policy. Local policy is unique to the district, but when required by law, or if a policy would contribute to district operations, Tasby does create some standardized policy statements to facilitate adoption of key policies, taking into consideration common responses to choices allowed by statute. The Board can explore further tailoring of policy to match its own institutional needs and practices, subject to Tasby approval. So I would say that probably, and this is a guesstimate, of all of our local policies, maybe fifty-five to sixty percent of them, Tasby has provided some piece of a template policy for our consideration. And in some cases, we adopt the template, and that's that. In other cases, we have added on to it considerably, and we look at those on a regular basis, trying to update those policies to the current needs and requirements of the college. It's not a true statement to say that with regard to a change in policy that staff was wanting to recommend, the Board is wanting to start, et cetera, that that's something that is an entirely Board-centric opportunity. When we have a change in local policy that's proposed, we work through it at the staff level, and we bring it first and foremost to Tasby, and we have Tasby do an initial analysis of it. And they come back and tell us, yes, this looks fine, or no, and here's why, or they'll tell us, yes, but, try this instead, make this change. Then we bring those, when you see a policy from us, it's been through that initial Tasby review. So, once that occurs, and you have approved it, it goes back to Tasby one last time for their final approval. And to be fair, I've not had them ever not approve something on that second analysis, but, you know, it could happen. And then after that, there's a period of time before they upload revisions to policy to our policy manual. I know you all have been shown how to access our policy manual on the website, and it looks like it's maintained on our website, but it's not. It's actually maintained by Tasby. So, when a change needs to be made, we don't do it. We send it to Tasby. They go through the process, they do the upload.
Carol?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you talk a minute about our relationship with Tasby? If I understood correctly, you said a number of years ago, TCC did not use Tasby.
Correct.
Do we use them under statutory requirement?
No, we are not statutorily required to use them. But to my knowledge, they're the only game in town that writes Texas policies.
Essentially, we rely on them because they're on, for lack of a better term, they're on top of statutory requirements and so forth.
They are the subject matter expert.
Okay.
And they are a vendor to us.
Okay, and we pay them a fee, I presume?
We do, we pay them a fee. We have a contract with them.
Okay. So, I'm curious about us adopting a policy that they have to approve. Are they advising on that, or do they have veto?
Very much.
Veto power?
I think veto power is an overstatement, but it certainly is true that, I can think of one policy we submitted a year or so ago, and they came back and said, this is not a good idea, because there was a case that was decided in, I think it was Oklahoma, and they've taken the exact opposite approach here. We recommend that instead of doing this, you do this little change, because that will address the Oklahoma problem, assuming it ever gets adopted by the Supreme Court.
Okay. I think that clarifies the relationship, at least for me. I understand it better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carol?
Yes.
I have, thank you for that question. So, if we, well, how can I ask this? How often, or what is the practice, the best practice, for reviewing policies to make sure that they're in alignment with where the college is? For example, we have the three goals and eight principles. We're looking at, you know, fostering a culture that's more, you know, different than maybe what we've had traditionally. So, at what point do we need to go through and look at all of these policies and say, yep, this is reflective of where we are and the direction we're trying to go? What's the best practice around that? And how, you know, and what have we kind of operationalized?
Well, you're kind of stealing my thunder here.
Okay.
That was later, but let's go ahead and talk about it now.
I'm sorry.
We are currently undergoing, and in what I'll call an internal review, of the policies that are used the most. Because of all the jillion policies that are listed on here, some of them are used a lot more regularly than others. But we're doing an internal review of all those policies. We're trying to hit the ones that are the most impactful. Part of that you saw this last month, when you saw there were, of those fifteen policies you looked at, eight of them came from an internal staff review. You're going to see some more of those policies, different policies, again, this coming month. And we've got some more that are on the way in November. So, that's our current activity. After that occurs, Tasby offers a service of doing a full policy review of the policy manual as a whole. I have not discussed it yet with the Chancellor, but this is something that I think we ought to ask them to undertake for us. It's not tremendously expensive, and it would be an add-on from our additional contract, of course, but it would be something that they would do for us that would help us understand, not only where are we in terms of best practices, but one of the best things about Tasby, in my mind, is that they're able to tell us what other institutions in the state of Texas do. That's extremely valuable to us, both in terms of making sure we're staying on par, and that we aren't becoming an outlier in ways that we don't want to. It's also valuable to us because it makes our policy so much more defensible. If we have a policy that's being followed by a number of other institutions, of our sister institutions, that makes it a lot more palatable to judges.
Okay.
So, after, and my thought process would be that, and of course, you would see that, whatever the result was of a review by Tasby of our policy manual as a whole with their recommendations, those recommendations would come to you, to the Board, in case they offered changes, modifications, suggestions.
Right. So, to that point, which, I like that idea, but, so, how do they, how does the college engage in those conversations to make sure that what, again, the direction, the culture we're trying to foster, how is that incorporated into the policies, right? Because they're looking at it from this level, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, how does that, the college culture, how is that integrated into those policies?
I think a good example of that would be the work that Dr. LeBlanc has undertaken on the faculty framework. I mean, you guys have heard about that for a couple of years now. And part of the changes that you saw last month were the result of that work. That was a collaboration between Academic Affairs, the presidents of the various campuses, the VPaaS and the VPSDs on all the campuses, and the JCC, over collaborating on questions like credentialing of faculty. And so, what comes to you on those is coming from a collaboration from all of the departments that are affected.
Okay.
Similarly, when I receive updates from Tasby, you know, we don't just bring them straight to y'all. That's not how that works. They're first sent to all of the divisions that have some sort of an impact as a result of that. Upon occasion, we have, what you've seen have been, okay, this is the Tasby update, they recommended this and this. We, however, are recommending, we're not going to recommend this, and we're going to do this instead. So, no policies go straight from Tasby to the Board, ever. They go through the lens of whatever division is the most affected. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I'm sorry to steal your thunder. I think, just think of it as a head start.
It is, it is. Next are regulations. This is the newest piece in the puzzle for us. Regulations are administrative documents that are put in place to implement the policy or to describe a procedure. Administrators document how things are going to happen in regulations. Realistically, the Board can't implement the work of the district in education and managing the operation of the district. It's, that's the work of 6,000 employees. Because regulations are by definition more granular, they need to be more flexible to address changing circumstances. And that is why regulations are not adopted by the Board, in order to avoid painting ourselves into a corner and rendering administration less able to effectively manage the district. In years past, regulations were managed, you know, people in the various departments had their own regulations, or they might be listed perhaps on the website, but there was no central repository for them. Several years ago, Tasby started a new service that allowed us to post our regulations online in the policy manual. And I signed us up to be one of the pilot organizations that did that. And we've spent the last few years slowly but surely going through our policies, pulling out the pieces that aren't really policy, and instead, the pieces that are more administrative regulation, things like, y'all don't really care if there are five people on the committee or seven people on the committee. Pulling those out and then putting them in a regulation document. But, that document is then posted on the website. So, for example, if you go to the policy relating to tuition and fees, you'll see first, it'll say that section, legal, and then that'll be the legal policy, the laws, the regulations that underpin tuition and fees. Then there'll be the local policy on it, and then below that, there'll be the regulations that also are pinned to that same policy. One of the beauties of this is that the word search feature on the policy manual works for those regulations. So that if you typed in the word tuition, you're going to get a reference to every single policy, legal, local, and regulation that relates to that topic. And that makes it easier for people, I think, to find and become more familiar with the pieces of the policy, the regulations, that relate to whatever they're looking for. Let's see, anything else?
Carol?
Yes.
I have another quick question, and I think I know the answer, but, so, as people are working the principles in the three goals and eight principles, is it possible that there could be some policies that are driven out of that work?
Absolutely, and there already have been.
And they could bring that up, okay, and it would go through the principal work?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes. And actually, the principal work has already generated some proposed policy changes.
Okay.
So, so the answer is yes, very much.
All right, thank you.
So, as to what we see from Tasby, we receive twice a year, generally speaking, in May and December, updates from Tasby. In years when we have a legislative session, sometimes they're a little bit later on the May policy, for obvious reasons. If we have situations where we have a really monumental change that occurs off-schedule, a good example of that is Title IX, which you might recall, you saw a whole bunch of policy changes around Title IX last August, because that's, we received that information from the Department of Education in late May, and then they spent June and July promulgating regulations, and we brought you what we had to bring to you to make, to keep ourselves compliant with the new regulations before they became effective at the end of August. In years when we have a legislative session, our policy updates are more voluminous, for obvious reasons. This year was a real exception to that. The legislature didn't really do that much around higher education this year. They had other priorities. But, last session and the session before that, the policy updates y'all saw were pretty substantial. So, it's a year-to-year thing. We just never know. Okay, moving on from policy to the bylaws. You have two copies. One is, the big thing is your bylaws, the smaller thing is the crosswalk. I do not know the history on where these bylaws came from. I can't tell you that. I can tell you a couple of things. At a point in time when we were signed up, the district was signed up with Tasby, Tasby, I don't know, restated the bylaws, and that's what you see here. And you'll see, with every section, there's a reference to a policy. Now, this is what's interesting. I've been in conversation with Tasby for the last couple of years, asking them about this. And because we are not, the district is not a corporation, a limited liability company, any kind of an entity that must have bylaws. We are a political subdivision, so it's not a requirement. But, as you'll see, if you take a look at this, everything that's covered in these bylaws is covered in policy. So, I asked the question of Tasby, if we needed bylaws? And the answer to that is no. You know, I'm not suggesting that we do anything today, but I'm just putting this out there for y'all to think about. If we, if you want to continue to have bylaws, two things need to be decided. Thing number one is, what do you want those bylaws to do? Specifically, what do you want the bylaws to do that policy isn't doing? In my mind, it's dangerous to have the same material covered in two places, because it's easy for the one to get out of sync with the other. Here's a great example. These bylaws haven't been touched in a very long time, and we've had changes. You saw two changes to some of the B policies last month. If the decision is made that you think there's a place for the bylaws, then we need to do a really deep dive into what's in there, and we either need to seriously modify them to get them congruent, and then there's going to have to be a really concerted effort to keep them congruent going forward, because changes come from us and from Tasby pretty regularly. Or, if you have a different vision for what these bylaws do, then that's a subject for another retreat conversation. So, that's just something.
Are you tempting me?
[laughing]
I do bylaws.
Yeah, I know, it's your.
I'm kidding.
I know, it's your thing. So, that's, I'm happy to talk, you know, answer questions about the bylaws. I don't really, this is certainly not an action item. I just wanted to plant some seeds, food for thought.
Okay.
I think in this iteration, it's about fifteen years, and I don't think they've been changed in fifteen years. I don't think.
Okay.
They haven't been changed in eight years, I can tell you that for sure, because that's how long I've been here.
And nobody really knows who wrote them.
I think this iteration was, I think Tasby was involved in the promulgation of that particular iteration of bylaws.
What, Carol, what other colleges doing? Do they have both? Or is it just across?
That's a good question. I asked the very same question of Tasby, and they said it is a completely idiosyncratic thing. Some colleges have them, some do not. Some are much more skeleton than these.
Okay. So, maybe we just kind of get a summary of what, which, this is very helpful, but I personally, before we just disregard it, I'd like to know, you know, because I know we need to have a further discussion around this.
Yes.
So, I think I'd like to get a little bit more information.
And that's what this is.
Yes.
This is the crosswalk between the sections and the policies.
Okay.
So that it gives you a good sense of.
Okay.
Where it goes.
So, if we'd have basically two action items, we'd have to decide at some point what we're going to do with the bylaws. And the second thing, you asked us, you mentioned to us about whether or not we would engage Tasby to review all of our policies. How would that, how would we go about that decision-making? We would do that in a meeting, or would we just direct you accordingly, or you would investigate, or?
Well, first of all, I need to, I think we need to, I don't want to, I want to have our policies in a position where our staff thinks they, the big ones, meet our needs and our desires.
Okay.
At that point, and they price it based on that sort of thing.
Okay.
At that point, I say, here's our existing current policy manual, basically give me a price.
These are ridiculous. Okay, so, basically, we need to do an internal assessment and kind of get a baseline?
We need to finish our internal assessment and update.
Okay.
Then we submit it to Tasby. They take a look and say, okay, we'll do a full policy review for X dollars.
Okay.
If it's less than $100,000, then we do that procedure. And of course, if it's, and I, Lord, I wouldn't think it'd be more.
Okay.
Then it would come to the Board for approval.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do away with them.
All right, so.
Yeah, no, I'm, no, it's just supposed to be.
Can I, can I ask one question, or?
Sure, oh, please.
A request for information. First of all, as a relatively new Board member, I appreciated the onboarding process and the opportunity to go for an orientation session. I think that it was helpful in having context around those things that will happen most likely as a member of the Board. And of course, that means that we typically don't cover those things that may not happen as often. But there is one area that I would just kind of like to put out on the table, maybe for a follow-up retreat, or at another Board meeting. As I review the Board powers and responsibilities, there's one area that I think is very unique to higher education, in terms of our responsibility to hear the appeals from employees, who are, you know, generally not happy with the process, so they're appealing the process at that point. So, I would love to have an overview at some point for the entire group on the tenure process, how that is different from an at-will employee, like a staff member or a term employee, because I think their tenure especially is unique to this type of Board.
I would very much like to have that discussion with you. I think it would be most appropriate for us to have that discussion in an executive session, because it would be involving legal advice and legal information for the Board's consideration. But I would welcome the opportunity to have that conversation with you. And also, that's a large part of what Dr. LeBlanc's group is working on right now. So, yes, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
You will be shocked to learn that we have opinions on the subject.
Thank you for that request, Mr. Kine.
Could we talk about when that might occur?
I think Dr. LeBlanc, I think the last piece of her revisions is going to be brought to you in November, and I think that after that, I think at that point, the new framework is completely in place, and then I think it's very timely for you to have that conversation with us.
And that might be a good subject for our next February retreat, it seems like.
That's what I was going to suggest, if we could maybe do that in our February retreat.
We'd be happy to do that.
And then, of course, if there's any other things we want to discuss relative to the policies, we can run those through you.
Surely.
Okay.
Surely.
Thank you.
This, very briefly, I wanted to have a, we had some questions raised around social media, and also around personal devices that the Board members may use. The two statutes that impact you in your function as a Board member, one is the Texas Open Meetings Act, and the other is the Public Information Act. The term "meeting" of a governmental body must be open to public except expressly authorized. They have a right to timely notice of the meetings and to be informed of the business to be conducted. The Open Meetings Act has spawned so many cases and regulations and all of that, and I don't want to get into it too much today. But I do want to say that, generally speaking, whenever Board members are discussing business before the Board, then that is something where you have to start asking yourself the question of, is the, have I triggered the Open Meetings Act? It used to be that people said, oh, as long as your one Board member is talking to another Board member about the business of the district, clearly you don't have a quorum, and therefore that's okay. Well, not so much. Once, then you have the problem of the third member and the walking quorum. The issue here is that the statute doesn't really care that one Board member talked to another, and then talked to another, and talked to another. The statute asked the question, was the intention of the Board members involved to frustrate the requirement of the Open Meetings Act, that all business of the Board should be discussed in an open meeting, in a public forum, that the public has a right to know about in advance, and then to have access to? The Public Corruption Unit over in Dallas, FBI Public Corruption Unit, and the District Attorney's Office here in Tarrant County are the two law enforcement agencies that have the most oversight, over, impact in questions about whether the Open Meetings Act has been compromised or not followed. The most common trip for members of governing bodies falls along the no-good deed goes unpunished line, where there's, one has talked to another, and then has talked to a third. Where, how you normally get caught is that one member of the governing body will text another one, and then five minutes later, one of the two of them will make a phone call to a third Board member. And when you have a law enforcement agency that's looking at that, you're never, ever going to be able to convince them that you all weren't talking about the same piece of business of the Board. That's exactly what happened up at the Carroll ISD in the last, what, less than a year ago? So, with that as the background, I want to encourage all of you to be extremely cautious in the use of your personal devices. Your telephone is, if you use it for Board business, it's subject to the Public Information Act. If you've deleted texts or whatever, we have the, whoever the requester can require us to go to the carrier and restore all of that, which is not cheap, by the way. They can get your telephone records to find out who you spoke to when. So, in many cases, a lot of people who are serving on Boards maintain two telephones, one for official business and one for their private use. I just throw that out there for your consideration. The same thing for your personal email account and your TCC email account. If a request comes in for all emails from the Board members or from a Board member, I have to ask the question, are there any texts, any emails, any whatever, on your personal account that relate to Board business? If there are, then I have to get all of those emails, and I have to review all of them to be sure that they are, whether or not they are responsive to the requesting question. On the other hand, if you do all of your business on your TCC email address, that's all I have to look at. Which brings us to the very sticky question of social media. It is very interesting, but if you go through our policy manual, there's very little in it on the use of social media. And I've had several conversations with Tasby about this. Part of, and the most important reason, is because Board members, employees, students, staff, all of us. employees, students, staff, all of us, have a First Amendment right to post whatever we want to post on our social media. However, a couple of things to think about. First thing is that if you have made a notation on your social media account that you are a trustee of Tarrant County College District, that can clothe anything you post on that site in the, in an apparent reference to your position. And as you all know, this board only acts as a body. You do not speak individually for the board or for the district. Therefore, it's very important that when you post something on your social media, if you have that notation, you need to be extraordinarily cautious about what that looks like. That is also why a lot of people have individual social media accounts, Facebook, or Instagram, or whatever, associated with their official position. So that's something else for you to think about. The next is privacy or the lack thereof. As a member of an elected body, you are subject, as you all know, to a much higher level of scrutiny. Please don't think that marking something as private on your, on your Facebook account, your Instagram account, will leave it that way. Whoever is in receipt of those private, or has access to those private posts, they can forward it, they can show it to somebody else, and then, and we've had, we have had situation in the past where that have occurred, where that have been very embarrassing for the person involved, because they thought they were doing something private. I think the wisest course for all of you is to assume that anything you post is going to get away from you. And I think you also need to assume that you are being recorded when you are on the phone with constituents, with members of the public, et cetera. So, I'm happy to talk about this concept further, now that I've said all sorts of scary things. Well, that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm very happy to answer them.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you. So, item number eight is the next board retreat is February 25. It sounds like we have some items that we'd like to include, so we'll be sure, Chancellor, and get those to you. Thank you so much. Looks like we're going to be going the annual board self-assessment, accreditation requirement, and any additional training that we want to engage in. So, we can send those over to you. Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions before we proceed? I think we were going to have just a closed session, consultation, let's see, let me read this. Okay, the TCC Board will conduct a closed meeting as authorized by Section 551 of the Texas Government Code in order to seek the advice of its attorneys, deliberate real property matters, deliberate personnel matters, or deliberate security devices or security audits. So. Okay, sorry.
You're good, okay.
The board will now reconvene in open session. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving adjourned.
Okay, Mr. Barr.
Second the motion.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. All right, everyone, have a great weekend, and thanks, everyone, for all the work that you put in for this preparation. It was a really good conversation, good dialogue. Have a great weekend. Thank you, Chancellor. good dialogue. Have a great weekend. Thank you, Chancellor.